I would like to call this meeting of the Robinsdale Area Schools School Board to order. It is Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. It is 7:07. We are in the boardroom of the Education Service Center. And before we take the roll, I am going to read the land acknowledgement statement. "We acknowledge Robinsdale Area Schools is located on the homelands of the Dakota and Ojibwe people. We recognize the painful history of genocide and forced assimilation of the indigenous inhabitants of this land. We honor and respect the many indigenous peoples who live on and hold sacred these lands. And we stand with members of these nations to fight injustice in all of its forms. We uphold the preservation of Dakota and Ojibwe languages, land-based education, and tribal sovereignty." Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you. Director Bassett here. Director Bowman is here. Chair Evans Becker.
Here.
Director Hillenbrand.
Here.
Director Holmes.
Here.
Director Long.
Here.
Director Wuto.
Here.
And Dr. Stallow.
Here. All right, we are all here. The first thing up is approval of the agenda. Do I have a move to approve the agenda? So moved. Moved by Director Holmes, seconded by Director Bowman. Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Thank you. Oppose say nay. We have an agenda. Moving right along. Ardell Proud, Superintendent Stallow, take it away.
Excellent. We know that our schools never rest, and we have programming 12 months a year at Robinsdale Area Schools. Tonight, we have an opportunity to hear from an amazing team who has worked throughout the summer, actually last fall, winter, and spring to plan for the summer. And we're able to host amazing opportunities for our kids. So at this time, Anthony, I don't know if I'm handing it to you to hand to your team or how we're going to work this, but I'll hand it to Executive Director of Community Education, Anthony Williams.
Thank you, Superintendent Stallow. Chair Ms. Becker, members of the board. I want to call up our team who are presenting our summer programming highlights to you all. All right. The mission of Robinsdale Area Schools is to inspire and educate all learners to develop their unique potential and positively contribute to their community. The purpose of, well, everything we've done over the summer with our summer programming really checks all four buckets on our strategic plan when it comes to academic achievement, student engagement and wellness, community partnerships and collaboration, as well as staff investment and impact. What you hear tonight should highlight, you know, various areas of that. The purpose of this presentation is to celebrate and highlight the work that we've done over the summer serving students, families, and community. All right, this is just a list of the programming areas that we offer throughout the summer. And I'm going to get ready to call up Brian to talk about E S Y.
Hello, everybody. Extended school year ran from July through the month of July. We worked on our two strategic themes, Theme A, Student Achievement, and Theme B, which was Student Wellness. And we offered services to 175 students, early childhood through transition age. This is just part of our federal mandate of providing special education services to students who will require that service if they meet the need through regression and skill, self-sufficiency, functional skills, and unique circumstances. Those students that maybe have medical needs that need services over the summer. Teachers, case managers collect data over before and after breaks to show a need for those services. Services, we provide transportation. They get all the services that they would normally get, like speech, OT, physical therapy. It's really a fun program. It's fun to work. The highlight for me was we had students at our Cooper program do a talent show on the last day of school, and they really enjoyed that. So we were at four sites, New Hope Learning Center, Forest, Cooper, and Robinsdale Transition Center. Again, those are our attendance numbers. We had pretty good attendance. A lot of times, kids will come for a couple days, maybe families go on vacation. So the numbers could always be higher, but we were pretty happy with the number of students that showed up this summer. Targeted services.
Good evening, everyone. I have the good pleasure of talking about targeted services and credit recovery this evening. Targeted Services is a state-funded program. It is a part of our comprehensive alternative learning center programming, and it addresses Themes A and B. For elementary targeted services, we consolidated sites into one at Robinsdale Middle School. So we had all of the littles going through a very large building, and it went beautifully. There was a little trepidation, and it went really well. We had just under 400 students attend. We used the same curricular resources that we've used for several years for English Language Arts. We use Lit Camp, which is a camp-like program to promote literacy. And we also used Math for Love, which is a game-based program for mathematics instruction, which the kids absolutely love. We brought in a science element this summer for both middle school and elementary. And for elementary students, they explored circuits in circuitry and very hands-on, interactive learning. For our middle school students, they were at Cooper High School. We had almost a 50% bump in enrollment this year. So we had 130 kids at the middle level. We used the same curricular resources that we do for the elementary level. And we brought in the works for this group as well, and they studied electromagnetism. So the power of magnets. It's very cool. Our credit recovery program was held at Cooper High School. This is an opportunity for students who may not have acquired a credit and their first pass through to achieve that credit over the summer. We had 669 students actually attend, and we awarded just over 500 credits. So tremendous. There's a breakdown of where they fall by grades. I want to note that our ninth grade numbers continue to decline because of the success that they are having due to many, in large part due to VAR at both Cooper and Armstrong. This does align with Theme A, Academic Achievement. We use Edgenuity as our platform to get the results that we wish for. And I'll turn it over to Anthony.
All right, thank you again. Just from a community estate lens, we cover, you know, all four themes from academic achievement, student engagement, well-being, collaboration and partnership, as well as staff development. You'll hear about programming from adults all the way down to our littles. With adult academics, we do offer programming just in the month of June. We served over 311 adult learners during that time, specializing in courses that they were interested in taking. So teachers develop their courses based on that. With our Adventure Club programming, which is our most popular, I always will say that, our most popular program in the district. You know, we have a lot of service learning opportunities for young people, Monday through Friday programming, where they engage in field trips, onsite presentations, so on and so forth. We have served over 900 students again this year throughout the course of the summer. And then our Summer Explorers, and this year we also offer Super Summer Explorers programming, which is more of a camp-like style program where they're doing activities such as robotics, coding, gaming, water week, things of that nature. We served over 200 students there. And then our enrichment are just individualized classes. Once again, another 200-plus students that we served in that programming. Unfortunately, due to some construction things happening within our facilities, as well as with the road, we did not offer swim programming this summer, but that is back up and running now for the fall. Some community things we did, we talked about partnerships. We had our Explorer Day, which is really an opportunity for families to engage in some enrichment activities for free, no charge for that. We had 26 families attend that event. And then we also do our Windows of Opportunity, which is our, and our adult programming, which is like trips for our adults in the community and different opportunities for adults with disabilities as well. And then we had 21 volunteers across the summer, across our programs this summer. We also employ 22 youth interns in partnership with StepUp and Brooklinks. All right, Anna.
All right, welcome. Thank you for having me. I'm here to talk about Freedom Schools this summer. Just a little brief history of Freedom School. It was out of the Mississippi Freedom Project of 1964. I just wanted to really highlight that Freedom Schools, the first Freedom Schools were in 1995 in Benjesville, South Carolina, and Kansas City, Missouri. So I just want to give a brief history. We talked about Freedom Schools, but just wanted to give that overview quick. So Freedom Schools, five essential components. I really want to talk about the parental and family involvement. This summer, we were able to host our family empowerment nights on Thursdays, and it was heavily attended. We were able to collaborate with many different outside organizations to bring in, to come in, to share information with our parents. And also, we were able to highlight our weekly themes, and so the parents know exactly what was going on daily with Freedom School. And so I really wanted to highlight that because our attendance was very high for that. The learning model, everyone, when you think of Freedom School, you may think of Harambe. The components are there. The opening chants are what really gets the scholars excited, get them ready to go for the day. Then we move into the Read-Allow Guest. We were able to have Read-Allow Guests for every day of summer programming, and so that was awesome to have. Programming went this year, June 17th to July 25th. Yeah. And then we were able to have Dr. Stallow come to be a Read-Allow Guest. Another one we had was Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan was able to come as well. This year, we served 109 scholars. So we actually told CDF we were serving 100, but we actually went over to 109. And so a couple of the activities that we had, we always have African drumming, but this year we had inner-city tennis. And so that was a new afternoon activity that we had. And then we also had leadership development. And so what we did is we, that was our Level Two scholars, which were grades third through fifth. They were able to participate in leadership development. They also, I didn't include it in there, but there was also an afternoon activity really focusing on social activism, and then actually what does that mean at that age? And because, oh, that's the next slide. But here's a highlight, a snapshot of kind of the scholars that we served. We had, like I said, we served 109 scholars this summer with, you can't see that, but it was 64 returning scholars. And so that's just a testimony of kind of the work that we do at the district here. We have returning families that want to participate in Freedom Schools. Every year, we have the, it's really the hard job that I have to put families on the waiting list, but soon as our enrollment, soon as our registration goes out, it's full within the day. And so that's the, I mean, that's great on one end, and we're turning away families, which, you know, don't like doing that. But it's just a snapshot that we have. I would say that we had the most of our scholars that came from that Level Two, which is grades third through fifth. So that was a lot of our population. Just wanted to highlight a couple things. So Field Trip Fridays, we went to field trips every Friday. Our scholars loved that. This year was our National Day of Social Action. The thing was public education is a public good. And so what we did was we collaborated with many different Freedom Schools that are in the area, and we met at St. Paul College, marched to the Capitol, and held a rally just to bring awareness to our public education. And that was a sight to see. And there's our scholars there. On the picture there, we have those teal shirts, so we can recognize everyone, because there's a lot of students out there. It's, you know, it's hard to keep up with ours. And then we had our finale. At the end, we come together. So each week, we're building up to the finale, and at the end, our scholars come and perform everything that they have worked on for the six weeks totality of the program. So this year was a little different, so I'm proud to share that we worked with our Robinsdale staff here. We worked with teachers. We worked with Bemidji State, Black Men Teach, Education Minnesota. We were able to provide our district with an elementary apprenticeship program. And we had six apprentices from our district go through the ground-up elementary apprenticeship program. And so it's, we recruited staff that didn't have their bachelor's degree, and they were able to participate in the ground-up program. One stipulation was they had to work Freedom Schools. And so it's a three-year program, and they're able, when they graduate through Bemidji State, they are able to have a Tier Three Elementary Education license. And so that's kind of the way we're trying to recruit more teachers of color to come to Robinsdale and stay in Robinsdale. That's all. No, that was very quick. So the total served this summer, we served 2,837 students this summer, and it's the breakdown of all of the other programs that we had and the students that we served as well. So any questions that we have?
Just congratulations from me. My goodness, everyone. Great work this summer. Any, Director Bassett and then Director Hillenbrand.
Thank you. So I have a question, and maybe that's for, I'll direct it to Director Williams, and he can figure out. I guess I'm thinking about, when I think about credit recovery, I don't believe that the credit recovery is something that can reach. We had a recent conversation and received information recently about the fact that some of our high school students don't have enough hours or credits to, and so, and so that's a kind of a question within that, is that, which is it? And this is not the appropriate, most appropriate form that you would try to address that. So I want to make sure of that. And then it's a mental note for myself that this is a conversation we were going to come back to, because I don't know the answer to that yet. So if you could just kind of make sure that I'm on track.
I misunderstood your question. I'm sorry.
Well, the question was, we received some information relatively recently from.
This topic, as far as summer credit recovery, is a different subject than it comes to that number of hours that our high school seniors have. So it doesn't, the two don't really correlate.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I was thinking. I wanted to make sure that was true. But at the same time, I want to make sure I'm making a mental note that that is something we said we wanted to come back and talk about, you know? And so it's helping me understand so I have the right language when we come back to the conversation.
Director Hillenbrand?
Yeah, my question actually has to do with Freedom School, because it's a great program and it's tremendous. And you didn't really talk a lot about the literacy aspect. I mean, they spend the morning, and I don't know if you all know this, steeped in literacy, and each kid gets to bring a book home every week. I mean, it's tremendous. But it's also a very expensive program. I know for the district I work in, we figured it costs about $2,500 per student. And so my question is the long-term viability in terms of funding for the program? Just curious how you see being able to continue to fund the program, because it is such a fabulous program.
Yes, Freedom Schools can be expensive. We do always look for different funding opportunities as far as grants and things. Yes, Freedom Schools can be expensive. We do always look for different funding opportunities as far as grants and things of that nature. And then leveraging different internal resources. We'll be looking for that for next year as well. You know, we recognize that for the number of students we serve, it does cost, I don't know what our total budget was this year, but two eighty-five per student, you know. But, you know, so looking for different grant opportunities, but also leveraging the, like you did with the apprentice program, bringing down some of the staffing costs helps out with that, with the, with the budget for Freedom Schools. But once again, we will be actively looking for funding for the twenty-six, twenty-seven summer, or the summer of twenty, was it, summer of twenty-seven, summer of twenty-six?
Into the future.
I mean, something, I mean, we've, we've been fortunate to have grant dollars to help, help to sustain it thus far. But once again, it's always a competitive market and, you know, but it's a value to the community.
Thank you. Director Holmes?
Yeah, so mine will build on that. Is that why you're capped at that hundred number, is funding issue?
Yeah, it used to be one fifty was our cap. They made some adjustments for budgetary reasons this year. And then capped it at a hundred, because it does have a significant financial savings there. And then, you know, they were still able to serve the families that they were able to serve, but like you said, there's a waiting list. And there's no revenue strain for per student. So yeah, they, they modified from one fifty to one hundred, just to make it more affordable for just this year.
So with that, I'd be interested in how consistent that waitlist is, because if you guys are doing a great job on, I know I came last, not this summer, last summer, and helping the students with their individual reading goals, I think that was really impressive, and working with them on what makes sense for them to read and their strengths. It has a lot of positive attributes for me. So I would like some more information, just to see if it's something the board would take up in future budget conversations, if it's really, I know there are other aspects, but the literacy component is strong, like Director Hillebrand said. And then just my second question. The volunteer program, you had twenty-one adults. Is there a need for more volunteers, and how can individuals go about helping if they're interested?
I don't know if there's a need for more volunteers. I know that we do have a wonderful volunteer program throughout the school year, and typically, for the number of the level of programming that we have, they, it's not the individuals who reach out to volunteer, it's the programs who say we need volunteers, and they fill out a volunteer request form, and then based on that, we, we staff with the volunteers. But we always look for more volunteers from a district standpoint. I just don't know if it's a need for that, like for this last summer.
Fair enough. Yeah, I don't, I didn't know you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I got one fun fact. Peggy Flanagan was a former executive director of CDF Minnesota, which oversees Freedom Schools.
Well, I know that we have a lot of adults here tonight, but you saw the twenty-eight hundred students that they represent. And I know if it wasn't the first week of school, we probably would have had some students here as well. So in the future, I know that's always a fun thing that the board enjoys. So I just want to thank you for everything. Thank all of the teachers and the staff who also made this possible. And I'd love to give it a quick picture with y'all.
Okay, which is, here you go.
Do you like graduation?
You, you can be all together.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Congratulations.
Where did Missy come from, Allison? Where'd you come from, Allison?
She's being supportive. Alrighty. Item number five is the consent agenda. Consent agenda, it's easy for me to say. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member sole requests, in which in event, the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are as follows. The memo about the updated nutrition services meal price increase, that's increasing from five dollars to five dollars and five cents for a second portion. Meals are still free for breakfast and lunch for everybody. The business meeting minutes draft, study session minutes draft, dispersments, licensed staff personnel report, and the non-licensed staff personnel report. In the, as a side, in the non-licensed staff administrat, licensed, non-licensed staff report, we have two retirees, Douglas Hayes, twenty-seven years as a service employee, and Brenda Knudsen has twenty-two years in nutrition services. And we just appreciate their service and wish them well in their retirement. Is there a move to accept the consent agenda?
Some move.
Moved by Director Hillebrand, seconded by Director Bassett. This is a roll call vote? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hillebrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wu-Tao?
Yes.
Great.
So we have five, did you?
Correct.
Okay, we have accepted the consent agenda. The next item on our agenda is unfinished business. And this unfinished business is a discussion of school board professional development. When the school board had its professional development in July, five board members were able to attend, and all five agreed that we needed to work to be a better board. And Dr. Betty Webb and Dr. Nicole Dimmich said that they could help us. And then also, when we were doing agenda planning several weeks ago, there were three officers there, and we agreed that we wanted to get better. And so they the proposal is in your packets. You probably had a chance to look at it. And they are here to just briefly talk and then answer any questions you might have, and then we can talk amongst ourselves. Okay? So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. And the Board of Directors, we're very thrilled and grateful to be able to be here to share. We loved being able to have the conversation with you all in July. And so the proposal that you have in front of you is really based on that conversation and the feedback that we received from those of you who had the, had the chance to be there. And so we'll just let you take a look at it. And if you have any questions about the model and the approach that we take in facilitating and supporting board learning, we're happy to address any questions that you have.
Want to have any questions, comments? Director Holmes?
This isn't up for action, correct? Just reviewing the information?
It could be up for action. I mean, it's just, it's for information and getting a feeling from the board.
So, I'm Director Holmes. I was unable to attend your session, so it's nice to meet you. My comments really won't be about questions. It's just kind of about board development in general. And so I'll be speaking with my colleagues, not you all, so thank you. I guess my concern right now in putting this forward for action is the amount of meetings we have on our plate. And I know from your meeting that you sent, or your, excuse me, your email you sent Chair at the beginning of August, I don't know if we formally scheduled those additional work sessions around the SOD plan and the vision team. So those are looking at, you know, October thirteenth, November twenty-fourth, December eighth. For me, with the, with the information that was given, this is quite a bit more substantial of a commitment. And then the price tag, considering the topics we'll be facing. So I don't think this would be prudent for us to move forward at that time, or at this time. And then there are additional other professional development sessions that could help us that are free, that might be, you know, web-based. We can do on our own volition and then talk about it at a work session. So I did come up with some of those ideas, because I've been encouraged, if I'm gonna push back on something, to bring up additional ideas. So even Monkey Survey has a Modern Managers Summit, Lead with Competence Through Burnout, Change, and AI Disruption. It is September thirtieth. And again, it talks about strategies for tackling burnout and making decisions, not spinning in circles. It's led by their CEO, and they're giving tools. MSBA virtual workshop around negotiations, since we're going through that with nine of our bargaining units. That workshop is not going to return until the winter of twenty twenty-seven, so that's something we have access to as well. And then for me personally, I was hoping for more information or a work session on, on the SOD, just getting familiar with that plan. I mean, that's a lengthy document. And so yes, we could use additional board development. We've also had it. We've had consultants. We have a track record of being assigned tasks by board development professionals and not completing them, not circling them back. So that was another frustration for me when I went back to consider this and really look at how many hours I've been involved and since I've been on the board. And we've had tasks assigned to us by qualified individuals such as yourselves, and then we don't do it. So my focus is really on getting through the, what we have to, in the decisions we have. And could it be beneficial? Yes. But our schedule is also very, very heavy right now. And I personally can't be committing to additional work sessions. And then we have shortened work sessions. So if we readjusted our schedule that was already in place, potentially. But this presents a financial concern for me as well as scheduling. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. And so I would like to say, I agree with you, Director Holmes. But I would like to go, I would also say, I question whether additional professional development and how the board can get along with itself will change without us changing our behavior. And so I agree, it's a big expense, it's a big time commitment, and I am not, I'm not sure that it would make a difference. And we've had, we had board development last October for the same thing. We had it last summer in the evening and a whole day, we set norms. I, I'm, I agree, I'm questioning, I don't think that, I think the change has to come from inside, not from outside with us. Other board members? Director Bassett?
Let me just thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the time that you've already spent with, with us in this district. While I do agree that there are some challenges, interpersonal relationship challenges. And, and I think that those war with the whole question of the role of the board. And then there is some question, I think, among some about, it's not only the role of the board, it's understanding the role of the superintendent. That's our only one staffers, and so I could say the administration, but we only have one staffers, and so that. I think there's some questions about that, that I have become aware of. So I think maybe, I think perhaps yes, because I've had the pleasure of working with you before. And I've just met you, so I've had the pleasure of working with you with different board members when we had some challenges. So I know that your presentations and your work is, is effective, Dr. Webb, and, and I was impressed by your presentation. What I think is that we need more time. I'm not prepared to say no at this moment, but we're not voting. But I am prepared to say, I think that we need to have some other development. Now, one of the things that we have had before this been successful is working with MSBA, and I think maybe that's been alluded to by some, I'm not totally sure that's what you're referring to. But the person who does professional development for the board in this arena, who is Gail Gilman, is one person who was recommended, who has not been tapped. And so I think because those services are incumbent, to a great extent, they're encompassed within our, our membership fee. So to the question that some directors are raising about cost, I mean, there are some things, and there's some things that are offered, just, you can just go virtually and do. I think the board itself needs to have more, more, more commitment to come together, and not so much the homework. The homework is to come together and really have a conversation and talk about it. I think the board needs to have some frank conversation with some skilled facilitation that is objective. And not only objective, that is steeped in school board business. Because I think when you go to have legal counsel provide your, your, I've known enough attorneys around my time, and this is no disparagement, but attorneys are gonna come at the questions differently than school board folks will. And the School Board Association is the designated organization to work with school boards. And this board has not really, in recent times, worked with the designated, school board-focused professional development from MSBA. Because we've been working with the person who was, who came in and helped us do our search. We have a superintendent who was voted in seventy-one, so we don't need a search person. Excuse me?
Seven zero.
That, well, that's what I meant. Okay. So the bottom line is that it was unanimous. And so we have a superintendent. And so we, it's time to, you know, I mean, I think move on to the professionals in that association that focus on the school board itself and the school board's work, and give us good information that they have provided before. But not with this board. But when they provided it, the board listened, because that was their role. They're not coming in to protect or to be on the, you know, our side versus superintendent. They're talking about what is the role of the board, and then effectively and accurately. You know, as opposed to people thinking something's not the board's work that falls within their scope. And I think that they're, you know, that's my own personal observation, and so don't have to be right. But I'm saying, I think we have some other things to do. So I say, I think, pause for now, because I don't want to say no. I think that we've gotten some good instruction and work with and moved forward in the past when we've worked with you, Dr. Webb. And so I would, I would like to see us have an opportunity to come back to that conversation when we've actually did a little bit of our work, because it's been said that people don't do their homework. There's some truth to that, and part of it is that we don't have a lot of opportunities to talk about things. Our agenda is packed with things that are not about the school board. They're the business of the organization, which is appropriate. But we need to find a balance there as well. So that would be my feedback.
Thank you, Director Bassett. Director Hillebrand?
So, you know, I think that, you know, when you look at the first page of the proposal, you know, it talks here about developing clarity regarding the board's role in supporting the school district's core business. Learn and co-create discipline, communicate, co-create discipline communication processes to support, to support the school district's core business. Apply communication and decision-making protocols to the board's role in school district's core business. Co-create a way to reflect on the impact and accountability to the agreed-upon communication and decision-making processes. Those are all things that I think that this board is clearly in need of. Now, we want to talk about, are these the right people to do it? Is this the right proposal? I, you know, I'm, I don't know. And I'm not, this is a group decision. But I think these are clearly things that, as a board, we're missing. You know, do we want to take professional development and negotiation strategies? Maybe. But that's, this is the core of what we're missing as a board. And I think we really need to be reflective and think about that. This is why we're not functioning at a high level. We're not getting work done, because we're not hitting these bullet points as a team. Okay, I'm not, this is not pointing fingers at any person. As a team, we're not hitting these bullet points, and we're not getting work done that we need to get done in, in the timeline that we need to get it done. We're just not able to as a group. And so whether this is the right proposal, whether these are the right people, I'm happy to have that conversation. I don't know the answer. I don't have a strong opinion, but we all, and the other thing is that, and I understand, we all have lives and there are reasons, but we weren't all there for the professional development that we had. And so it's really hard when we're not all there to, to build as a team. And so I guess I'm just gonna lobby for that we, whatever the way we do it, these are the things that we need to get to before we can really work on an SOD plan, before we can do any of these other things. Because we can't, the reason our parking lot is so big, the reason why we keep coming back to things, the reason we're spinning our wheels, is because we're not achieving the things on the, on this list. At least, that is my opinion, okay? And like I said, I'm not pointing fingers, not saying it's any particular person's fault. I think it's, as a team, we're not accomplishing it. And so I think we really need to look at that and think, be really thoughtful about that before we completely say, this is the wrong direction.
Yeah. Director Long?
So I want to say, Dr. Webb, the times when we've talked, I've really appreciated how every time you've brought it back to, but this needs to be a decision for the board to make. Whenever any topic came up, whenever I was in a conversation with you, you always brought up, this needs to be a decision for the board to make. I need to hear from the board. Now, we don't really get that from a lot of, you know, other people who come in here and want to, you know, say things to us. But that's really what it is. It's us sitting here as a board trying to make these decisions. And I feel like oftentimes, other things are thrown in there that don't allow us to be a board. So, and have those discussions, you know, like you were pointing out. So although I would like this opportunity to work with you and learn more of that about how it is that we should be as a board and not listen to all this outside stuff that keeps trying to come in and influence us, and does come in and influence us. I, just right now, with what we have on our plate, with already adding extra meetings for other things, I just worry about the capacity of it and being able to do it with integrity is what I'm concerned about. But yeah, I mean, I would like us to figure out how it is that we can do things as a board and not have to continue to bring outside influences into that discussion of us as a board.
So anybody who hasn't spoken, who would like a chance to speak before I call on people for a second time? Okay. In that case, oh, Director Bowman?
In my years of being an elected official, I have always, as many times as possible, engaged in professional development of the role that I'm in. It's a very important part of growth and doing your best in that role. So I've always supported professional development. I'm not real clear as to what to do in this case. My experience with this board is that most of our professional development has caused harm, and a great deal of harm. And to talk about moving forward without having spoken of the harm that's been done and the trauma that's been placed upon board members is a really hard thing for me to support. My role as an elected official is to come here, be one vote, listen and learn, and vote to the best of my ability for what will serve the organization. I am not here to worry about personalities. I am not, this has never been a beauty contest for me. This has not been anything but the business at hand for the institution, regardless of the institution I've been there to serve. And I don't know that there's a way to bring us to a common ground of just understanding that we're seven people, all with differing opinions, that need to stop abusing one another. And we have had a track record of false starts in all of this. Nothing's ever right, nothing's ever this, we don't want this. We've had the opportunity, have mediation. We've had the opportunity to look at and assess behaviors through complaints and investigations that have been done. And I'm weary, I am just, I am shell-shocked from the past two and a half years of being on this board. And nothing would give me greater satisfaction than to have somebody come in and wave that magic wand and fix what causes harm and what causes hurt. But I just don't have any level, I come from a complete level of non-trust at this point for that happening with this group. This is also, I think the thing that causes me concern is that what, and to Director Helen Brand's point, I agree completely. The bullet points in this are exactly those things that we should be working on to have forward movement. We have not been new, I mean, we are not new at being told by experts, by experts. And I, it doesn't matter if we listen to MSBA or if we listen to our previous professional development person or whatever we do, until I, as a person, decide that I'm going to do the business with a good heart and without the harm, I don't know what we can do. So, because intention, I think, plays a big role here. So I, you know, I'm open to whatever we can do to make things better for these kids, because we're here to serve these kids. And this is a board that never even brings up, we're here to serve these kids. So I am open, I am open, I have the floor, I have the floor. I am open, and this is part of it. I don't need to have somebody talk over me when I'm at the table and I'm providing my opinion. So I am open. I love what you had to say in this report. And whatever the will of the board is, I will go along with it. Thank you.
Sorry, before we, yeah, I wanted to ask, how do we know?
Director Wuto, did you have anything you wanted to say on this topic?
Yeah, I think a lot have been said. And the fact is that we, as a group, need to take that ownership. And also as individuals, need to take their ownership. So yes, do we need the training? Possibly. Is this the right time or is this the right group? That's debatable. I will agree that if we can personally take that ownership that everybody has spoken about, there is a good way forward.
Thank you. Next, I have Director Holmes and Director Basset, if you have something different to say.
I do, I just want to clarify. I, I agree with what you were saying, Director Helen Brand, as far as work to be done. And again, it's, I appreciate that you weren't here. It's just speaking to what I've experienced. And the fact of the matter is, SOD, we have to complete the plan by January 31st. So that's why I brought that up. So my focus is going to be on getting data, processing data, seeing what those suggestions are. And every action that I have from here forward and since I've been on here has been about the students in this district. The notion that we're dysfunctional is old. We don't have time for that anymore. We have major, major decisions in front of us. So I think we're committing to doing that work, and we have no way around it. And we're scheduling additional work sessions to get through the information. Our next big one is going to be September 23rd. So my point wasn't to discredit this group by any means or say we didn't have work to do. I'm saying everything I'm doing is about these students, and we've got major decisions in front of us. So I would just ask that we keep those questions or those comments at a minimum.
Director Basset?
I kind of agree with a lot of what everybody has said, quite frankly. And for me, I think the only, I agree that I like these topics on here, which is why I said I'd like to maybe, we just not, we're not acting tonight. So to have more time for us to kind of figure out where we are. It was really was my basic comment. And, and in that, I think these are exactly the right topics. But I think we, you know, a little bit of information about consensus building. Every, I mean, I've never sat with all seven of us who agreed on everything all the time. But sometimes it's not the decision, it's how do you build consensus? And, you know, some skills around that. Because there is no way in the world I would have come back with some of this stuff, talking about harm. That, so I mean, I feel like I'm going to be a poster child for that, quite frankly. You know, but that's not where it's at. So I have consciously, and I think others have consciously tried to overcome some things to work together. But if we're not looking for a consensus, building consensus around each topic that comes to us, instead of, well, I got four, I got these many votes, I don't, I don't, I've never operated like that. I've never operated from a vote perspective. It's work and we, what are you saying that I can relate to, that resonates, that's going to get us closer where we need to be? And I, I think that that's the only thing I would add. And I wouldn't add anything, but I just say, when we talk about decision-making, I have seen that as a major stumbling block. Because, you know, the goal is for us to work together. So when we come to decisions, we can make those decisions that are going to be in the best interest of the district. That's it. And if we can't, if that is not the goal, the goal is winning. And then we don't, then who, winning for who? Winning for the students. And then that's worthy of trying to build consensus in my book. It's worthy of me to take a few hits and move on.
Okay. Everyone who was wanting to talk got a chance. What I'm hearing is that we're all agreeing that the goals are something we need to work toward. But I, I'm not getting a yes-go-ahead feeling with it right now. I think I'm hearing the timing may not be good. And I'm hearing a willingness to work together, but we're not ready for a decision tonight. And so, Dr. Webb?
May I say something, please?
Pardon me?
May I say something, please?
Yes, Dr. Webb.
Is that appropriate? I don't want, I don't want to misstep myself.
I called on you, it's okay.
It's okay?
Yeah.
All right, I don't want you to throw me out of here. Some professional development is sit and get. And you get a task that you go away with. You have enough tasks on your plates. Professional development that's steeped in your work, and while you do your work, is not extra. It's while you do the important work of this system that we embed the professional development. And we talk about the communication protocols that might be possible. This is not about come and sit and get something and you get a task that you're supposed to come back, that's not what this is about at all. I just want to be clear about that. You have work to do, that's important work to do. But there can be some improvement in protocols on how that work gets done. That's what this is about. And it's as a board. So as you do your work, those are concrete examples to talk about. How did the communication happen? And how can we improve that communications in three different ways? One, between and among ourselves. Two, between ourselves and the administration. And three, between ourselves and our constituencies. Three levels of communication. But it's based on concrete work that you have to do. You got to do that work anyways. So if in doing that work, you feel that you can get better, we embed the professional development in your doing your work. I just want to make that clarification, because what I think I'm hearing is, we're talking about something separate that adds time to your calendar? That's not what we were talking about. I'm not interested in coming in here and talking around the table around stuff that's in isolation of your work that you need to get done. You have busy people and your, I think when I met with the board members before, I said you get three sermons. You're only going to get one tonight, and this is that, this is that sermon, y'all, right? You embed the learnings in doing your work and getting your work done. Now, if that's what you want to do, then we're, we're your people. If that's not what you want to do, then go get somebody else to do that. We are not. Begging, I think I said to the board, I'm going to make you an offer that you can refuse. You can refuse this offer. But if you are in fact interested in getting better, while you do your work, then I'm your person, we're your, we're your people. If you're not, and you want to go sit and get for somebody to talk at you and give you a task to go away with that you don't have time to do anyways, because you already got enough tasks before you. So while you do your work, let's talk about, on this, name some, you got to get the work done anyways. But name something that we can get better at the communications around, between and among ourselves, between the board and the administration, and between the board and your constituencies. That's the way we do professional, professional development, right? So if you're talking about adding stuff to your calendar, I would rethink that if I were you. You have time for that. But you have stuff already on your calendar that you can get better at doing your work. I simply just wanted to insert that, that we're not asking you to put, I, I don't think we're asking you. Am I, am I talking for you too? Right? We're asking you to put additional time. We want to help get better at doing the work that's before you already. And if that's what you want to do, fine. If not, then refuse this offer. And if you think there's somebody better to do that, y'all, that's, I've had experience with Director Basset, right, with the board before. But I don't think I've had experiences with the rest, the rest of you. But that's the way I work. I don't have the time to waste to, I shouldn't use the word waste, but to come and sit and get. You don't have that time. The work is too important. You got people waiting on, we have people waiting on us to get better at doing the work. For those of you who are talking about the students, everything is about the students. The question is, who do you serve? Who is your proximate customer? The ultimate customer for all of us are our kids. So we don't even need to say that. What we need to say is, who's our proximate customer? And how do we get better at serving our proximate customers? So I, I, I simply wanted to insert Chair Evans Becker, Director Evans Becker. I simply wanted to insert what we're about and why this offer is being made to you. And why we are serious about saying, if somebody else is better at doing it, go get them. If not, we're here to serve you. And in serving you, you become our customer. And if you want to get better at doing your work, we got to do it around doing your work.
I agree.
Not just sit and get. Ah, I'm sorry, Nicole, but.
Thank you. And this offer does not expire tonight, right? This offer does not expire tonight. I understand from the board that they're not ready.
We simply came here to let you voice your concerns, your thoughts, give us your feedback and your direction. Whenever you make the decision, the offer's on the table. And this is an offer, again, that you can refuse. And I simply thank you for allowing us the time to just even interact with you. Because this work, my friend, this work, I'm, I'm 80 years old.
Hello.
No way.
And I'm passionate about the work that we have to do on behalf of the children we serve.
That's right.
And we don't have time to waste to do that work. I'm done with this sermon now.
Thank you so much. We have one more person who wants to speak. And we just appreciate so much you being here. And we also appreciated our professional development in July, very much.
Yeah, I'm super inspired every time I hear you. And I feel like if I call now, I'm going to get an extra set of Ginsu knives or something. So thank you. But really, my question was, is that what is, what's the next step in this process? I just don't want us to lose the thread of this, so.
Okay. The board would, the board would need a motion, but I'm going to consider this unfinished business and make it at another meeting. Okay, I think people need time to think and figure out. It's $25,000 is a lot. And so let's, let's push this out. We can put it on agenda setting for our next meeting or a future meeting. Director Basset, I see your name down here, did you want to talk?
I was going to, I am good. Don't, because I think, but I think I heard that people are okay with this content. I think I heard, I think I heard consensus that these are the right topics. I don't know if I heard that or not.
I, I feel, listening to people, that these are definitely things that the board needs to work on. I think that, I think that consensus on that. So we'll bring it back. It'll be unfinished business again. But I think it's time for us, everybody, nobody's got a hand up, we're going to move on. Okay. New business. The next item on our agenda is a statement regarding the violence at Annunciation Church. I would like to read a statement. And if the board is supportive of the statement, we'll get a motion to support this statement.
I'm moving.
I think that it would be important to read the statement. And then I will certainly take your move, okay? The Robbinsdale Area Schools Board of Education expresses deep sorrow and concern following the recent act of violence at Annunciation Church. This tragedy has brought immense pain and trauma to families, students, educators, and the broader community. Our district is grounded in the values of safety, respect, Our district is grounded in the values of safety, respect, compassion, and the inherent dignity of every individual. Acts of violence have no place in our schools, places of worship, or any community space. We recognize the profound impact such events have on the well-being of our children, families, and staff. We stand in solidarity with all those affected and extend our heartfelt support to the victims, their families, and the Annunciation Church community. We are committed to ensuring that our students and staff feel safe, supported, and valued in every school environment. As we collectively grieve and process this tragedy, we remain dedicated to fostering peace, safety, and compassion throughout our community." And Director Bassett, you move to approve this statement from the board?
I'll second.
And Director Bowman moves a second. Director Long.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick statement kind of about how some of this came about. After the incident happened, I was approached by a school board member from another district who wanted to make a joint statement, but wanted all of us school board members to come together to make that statement. Because that's something that we as school board members, you know, being entrusted with everybody's babies, we don't want things like that to happen in our schools. So I had reached out to the chair about it. I had hoped that our board could have figured out a way to discuss that joint statement that was going out from other school boards. The response I got was, you needed to talk to the superintendent. So I, you know, just like before, I hope that there is an opportunity for us to come to some way that we can talk about things as a school board. And I have mixed feelings about us doing the statement now because I don't want to feel like I'm taking somebody else's idea from them when it wasn't initiated from me. So I just wanted to say that. And if, if the person who originated this idea feels offended, I apologize.
These are, these are the words that I, that were written for us. This is not a statement written by other people. I did this. Director Holmes.
Yeah. It's another, another incident. And I think we all feel this as community members and parents and educators. And it's paralyzing, to be honest, at some point. And I guess I want to empower the chair and vice chair to act in a more timely manner next time. Just to show the community that we are with them in that moment. And I don't want to political politicize this because my heart just aches day in and day out. And I also want to recognize our stakeholders and the fear and the pain you all feel over and over again as we're entering the school year. So for me, I, the statement is here. And I hope in the future that you both feel empowered if it's something you can come together on to get out quicker. I would, I would back that. And then going beyond this, I think what are our actions as a board going to be to support this statement? So we can honor the words we're telling our community and our, our stakeholders that we are committed to this. So that's gonna be very important for me, what are our next steps? Thank you.
Okay, the reason I didn't support the statement from the others, I couldn't support the statement from the other school boards was it said that we were going to, we were willing to send counselors from our district to help out. And that is not, that is not something that's in our responsibility. That is an administrative thing. And so that's why I held off on that, just to be clear. Because the original statement by the school boards that Director Long was talking about offered support of our counselors, and that is not what the school board can do. I couldn't do that. Okay, another thing? You wanted to say something else?
Yeah, I mean, just to that point, just because this is the only time we do get to talk about it again. If it's a money thing, it would have to come to a vote. But I think, no, in terms of if we were sending counselors. For me, there's other, there's other ways around that in terms of we could ask people to volunteer. If you are trained in counseling, can you go over? I just don't want you to get hung up on red tape when there's something this important. Because it does, that statement, what was important to me is that how the district lines are gone. We are all unified by this. And so I just, I want you to feel empowered and not be hung up on, on, on one word. And I think that's a bridge we could have crossed because, just to show immediate reaction. And, you know, resources are something that, I understand what you're saying. I just think there's ways around it. And just so that, show that timely response, I think is really critical for me. And you know what? As a district, if we have therapists that are willing to go over there and time card, maybe that wasn't an option. But if they're trained and therapists are hard to come by and they want to go, we could have at least offered it up. What a, what an awful thing to go through. And I just appreciated the unity of, of the districts coming together.
Director Bassett?
You know, I was surprised when I saw the joint statement come out from, not surprised, but I noticed when the joint statement came out from the other districts. And I didn't wonder about us. I will say this, that I think that judgment matters. And judgment is something that happens on the spot. And if there aren't deliberate efforts to circumvent protocols, there's no point in having people who have, who have the level of responsibility if judgment calls can't be made that rise to the level of an emergency. When District 287 suffered the loss of a student in a student day a couple of years ago on their campus, to a person, to a district, people responded immediately. All districts came together and focused on being there for that district. This board should have known that there was some contemplation of a request. Letting, just letting us know that something's been requested and you're gonna deal with it, that, that would be good enough for me. I know something's happening. I just left it. I just, I just made my own statement because I've been involved in violence prevention work, and I just couldn't not say anything. And I just had to trust that there's somewhere we're talking about this. I would just like for us to consider when there's some protocol, there are some incidents and things that happened that your board should know, that when you know, we know. Now, you may not act. I'm not asking you to break any protocols, but we're just as important as the, we're very important. It's equal. Because then we talk about the implementation, we give it to the superintendent to implement. But we are the body that needs to understand what's, what's on the line. Your board needs to know. Because we care, just like you do. So thank you for putting the effort into this. I appreciate it. I think it's a good statement. But I think timeliness does matter and being in the dark. But I just had to trust, we're gonna do something, we're gonna say something. But I shouldn't have to wonder for a week and a half, you know? Well, however long, you know what I mean?
Thank you. Director Hillenbrand?
I'm going to stumble on how to say this, but I just want to caution that belaboring this discussion is turning this tragedy into, about us instead of about the people who actually suffered the tragedy. And I think we, this should be a discussion for another time.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that, I, I don't want this to come out the wrong way. But this should be about the 21 people who were harmed and their families and the people around them who are affected, and not about us. So if we could get back to the statement, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I would like, I don't see any hands up at this time. I don't see Director Wuto's hand up. I would like us to vote on the motion of support. And this is a roll call vote, I would like to hear the voices of the board. So approving the statement regarding the violence at Annunciation Church.
Thank you. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
I vote yes.
Director Hillenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are unanimous. Thank you. We will make sure that this is sent to them also. All right. More new business. This is a fun one. Action is the resolution accepting donations. We had over $5,000, no, we had over $10,000 in donations this month. Is there a move to accept these donations?
So moved.
Moved by Director Bowman, seconded by Director Bassett. This is a roll call vote, please take the roll on this vote.
Thank you. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
I vote yes.
Director Hillenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Thank you, seven zero passes.
Okay, thank you for the donations, accepted unanimously. Next item up is action C, the e-learning blended learning plan. It will be a roll call vote. We talked about this at our last study session. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. McDowell? I don't see any questions. Is there, is there a move to approve it?
I'll move, and then I have a comment.
Okay, it's moved, we can't comment until we have a second. Do I have a second? It's seconded by Director Hillenbrand, moved by Director Bowman.
Yes.
Comment?
Yes, please. I really wanted to make the statement that I really thought that this was an excellent piece. The document that you put before us was really textbook perfect. And for me, that was really a great starting point. I really felt like this document put together a great framework. These are the reasons why I'm supporting it. It's a great framework from a plan perspective, and it also looked like it was very doable. I think one of the things, couple of the things that I was really pleased with that allows me to support this is that it, it looks clear and concise. It was thoughtful, it was easy to use, it seemed all-inclusive. And for me, the thing that was really important as a board member is it really helped me, it really gave me a clearer understanding across our learning models as to how this was gonna be implemented and communicated to the people. I also thought it was really thoughtful, especially on page four, when included in this is a statement that says to assist families with multiple children. All emails will contain the teachers' names, grade levels, and school names. And I thought that was an incredible detail to include in this for anyone who has multiple childrens in schools. So I was really impressed with the whole thing, and I plan to support it.
I'm supporting it also. I appreciated the differentiation or the extra definitions about the blended part of it because the in-person questions that were answered, and it was very clear. Thank you for that. All right, we have a move and a second to approve the blended learning plan. Is this a, this is a roll call vote. I don't see any more hands up, so let's take that roll call vote.
And I am ready for that.
This is to approve the blended learning, the e-learning blended learning plan.
Thank you. Director Bassett?
Yes.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hillenbrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wuto?
Yes.
Great, seven zero.
Seven zero, we are unanimous. We have an e-learning blended learning plan. The next item up is the Nexus contract. We were presented the information about the Nexus contract at our last study session. And questions were submitted and answers were given. Does anyone have any more questions about the Nexus contract? Director Holmes?
And a second before we discuss.
Okay, do we have a move to approve?
I'll move approval.
It's moved and seconded, thank you.
So one of the questions I had, I spent time, I went back and watched it because we had some questions that came up. And one of mine was how this came about when we're dealing with contracts that are large and focusing on that professional service provider that you don't have to go out for bids. And I started backing into timing based on what was said and trying to separate between LTFM and the Vision. And so I just wanted to focus in a little bit more on that part of it for the public because these are big dollars. And then I do, I'm struggling with being a public entity and wanting to be transparent in decision-making, and that's why some of the questions I asked. And I know, so first, I guess, is there, is there something you can say about the LTFM and the Vision piece and how we're trying to separate those? Because that's what I was going around on. And we talked about bringing this back for action at a future date. I did not recognize it was going to be this date. When you back into the timing and you talked about spring plans and then going out for bid in January and February, and then designing six months prior to that is what the vendor said. So that's putting us right now for design. So I want to ask, can you please provide some more clarification around the Vision teamwork that is coming forward from the team and the LTFM and how it correlates with this vendor?
Good evening. Chair Evans Becker, Superintendent Stallo, hello. I will certainly try. So the motion that is before you is strictly or solely to our LTFM projects. They are not intended for anything that the Vision recommendation and movement forward would be, unless somehow LTFM coincides with, we're working on a building that becomes a building of focus. It's already part of the school board-approved LTFM plan. So it wouldn't be anything that you haven't seen before. Coming out of that meeting, and I believe this, this was one of your questions, Director Holmes, was, and I said I would provide further clarification at the meeting, was can you give comparisons to pricing? And because we didn't go out for a formal RF, a request for quotes or a request for proposals, I wanted to be respectful of other companies that do the same work because they weren't quoting us. And it's like, what have they charged in the market to other districts? So when you see District 1, 2, 3 listed, whether it's CM fee, which is construction management, that's the first slide. When you see CX fee, that's commissioning. And then the design fee, and you, and there's a, there's a slide on there that's an overarching umbrella that says Nexus does all of this. The reason why it's not super clear is because being respectful that we didn't do a formal process. And so these are what other districts, our size in the area, maybe not always, have experienced with other vendors. And what is Nexus's fee in comparison or percentage of fee? Now, I had tried to go back to what have we paid our vendors that have been in place? I did try, because that was really like, where are we at with, with vendors that have done the work in the past for us? In all honesty, I really struggled to find the original contracts. We have had a couple of vendors that have been in place for a very, very long time. And with the multiple transitions for employees, I, I couldn't find it. My former assistant couldn't find it. And so I, I struggled to find pricing. So this is the best I could get in the timeframe that we were looking for. So hopefully, that provides you at least kind of the umbrella of this might not be the lowest service provider for this particular area. It's definitely not the highest, they're probably mid-range as far as pricing goes. The reason why service providers don't have to go out for the lowest bid is because it is based on a service, and it is what you get. You trust, you know, expertise, you trust that you're, that there aren't hidden or embedded costs that you don't see. You trust that you're on time, on or under budget, those sorts of things. So that's kind of all how this came forward. I just wanted to address the one question that you had asked Superintendent Stallo in your email. Now, what we're looking at and what is before you is the fiscal year '26, which we're already almost three months into, or almost a quarter into, and fiscal year '27 LTFM. The reason why it's two years is because we naturally have a crossover. We start long-term facility maintenance projects, and they don't end June 30th. They roll into the next fiscal year. That's why it ends December of '27, because it's like trying to wrap up. We start work now for projects that will run through the summer. We start work now for projects that will run through the summer, spring, summer into fall, and it naturally curtails off. LTFM, of which you've approved already, and possibly situations that could come up where we have an emergency. We've had flooding in a couple of our buildings this summer where nobody plans for that, and we need help addressing those situations immediately. So it's the unplanned immediacy or emergency situations, and it's the LTFM that you have already approved. That is what I am looking, that is the contract that is before you tonight. The Vision work, the long-range planning, that is not what is, what we're talking about tonight. That is not what is on the table. Does that help address your question?
It does. It's still just not getting to the crux of it because it also butts up against when we're starting to address safety and security and as the Vision decisions are made or presented, and the board makes the decisions based on a bunch of feedback. How does that not carry over, though? Because decisions will be made on consolidation, mothballing, whatever. So that's, that's two years that we're going to be under contract. So some of it will butt up against. And I don't think I'm going to be able to get into the complete answer at a business meeting. That's why I thought we were going to have another work session, why I backed into the timing. Because we're going to be, the word that kept coming up was designing in that meeting. And that's going to be moving forward designs. Because it was my understanding from that meeting, the general things, the roofing projects, the LTFM, just those natures, we're not going to utilize this vendor because it's an added expense, and we have the capabilities to manage those.
We have the capabilities to manage some of those. Like the roofs this summer, we were able to manage those sorts of things internally. Some concrete work, we were able to manage internally. There's things on that list that we're not able to manage. I will say the, and I know we have Nexus in-house, but so they can clarify if I am reading this incorrectly. It says board-approved capital and LTFM projects. That's where we are today. Like, that is literally where we are today. So back to the scope of, you know, are we looking at vestibule and changing and, you know, those sorts of things? I would say, you know, are we back in front of you when we're looking at the mothballing? How to move forward? Right now, that's not board-approved, and we're...
I understand all that, but we were having some very loose conversation at the work session in terms of how it's going to move, how it could shift, because it even came up, well, you might be considering painting Sonnason, but then something happens, and now you're painting another one. So it was very loose in how we were talking about this. And when you're looking at 2% of a project fee on a $10 million, that's $200,000 fee to somebody.
No, that's fair.
So I'm doing the math and watching how many projects come up and still trying to balance being a public entity and being transparent with how we're choosing vendors and what we have internally. And I still can't get my feet comfortable with where we're, how this came about and the facility fee that was already paid for the assessment. So we're racking up dollars, I think that was 300, around $300,000 for the work they did in three months, the assessment.
We haven't paid that. That is...
Right. But if we move forward with LTFM, then it waives it. But if we don't?
No. That's not, that, the LTFM is a separate component than moving forward with the assessment and everything that's happened with the Vision. That's a separate contract.
And I guess that'll just be a communicate, that's, this is coming before us as a vote, and I am not clear on all of that yet.
That is a separate contract.
So, and then the question that I posed was how this one came about. And that's as a public entity, and I wanted to give you the opportunity because I want to be, people start talking, and it's about how they come about, and you want to have referrals, right? We all do that when we're looking for somebody to do our own house projects. And you need to balance that when you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I can look on their website and see a client testimonial from somebody that's working here now. So I don't, I just want to be really transparent in this. For me, it's just not feeling comfortable yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Basset?
Well, at the work session, as you all know, that we received this 168-page prospectus from them. You know, perspective's not the exact word because it's actually a contract, but it includes all those specifications. And we received it, that, just like we do the rest of the package, just before the actual meeting. And then they were at the meeting. And so I talked about it in that time, in that, that's an inadequate amount of time, 168-page document for the board to look at and to be ready to pass when we, some of the terminology and just even, just even the questions that just came forward. And this whole unclarity about the $360,000 contract that we came to understand or know about maybe like a month or two ago, that's relatively recent, and how all that fits together. And of course, as you may recall, I advocated for the continuation of the ad hoc committee because I really feel like having several directors understand and be able to say to our colleagues, you know, well, we feel good about this. We understand it. And to be able to, not only that, talk about it publicly and own it for the community. So I too thought there would be more time, you know? And we didn't say how long before it would come back, but it's back again. And actually, it's 168 pages. And so just the page number alone may or may not, you know, land with people. But the fact is, there's a lot of detailed information in this document. And if it's something we're going to live with for a couple of years, the board should not, I don't feel comfortable voting on something that I don't feel like I have a handle on. And I do think there's a need for our ad hoc and facilities committee. And whether we still need transportation is an open question, but it was the ad hoc transportation and transportation and facility infrastructure committee. And the committee has not met for months. And it's not because I didn't advocate for it. But the fact is, is that it's that level of detail a committee can do, and a committee can understand. And of course, if we're going to overlay that with recommendations that are going to come forward from our reimagine, re-envision committee, that needs to be a thoughtful process. So it's no more mysterious than that. It's just a lot of information to take in. It's a significant amount of money for the contract, for design. And what does that even mean? Which is really kind of embedded in the question that you'd be asked of you right now. You know, what does that mean in real time and plain language for the community? You know, I think that those are important questions. And so I'm just voicing my concern as well, you know? And it's the same thing I said in the work session. It's not new. I said the same, some of the same things there.
Director Long, does your name?
Yes. Yeah, I too have a lot of confusion about exactly what it is we're doing and why some staff were diverted from doing LTFM things to do other things. I also want to express that I'm concerned that I feel like there might be some, a breach of something that happened. I don't know, nepotism, hiring a friend or whatever. I just, you know, I wish there was just kind of more transparency in the beginning about some of that instead of having to find out some other way about it.
Director Hillenbrand?
I just want to caution that we shouldn't be making, I appreciate that you have concerns, but I feel like unless, we shouldn't be making unfound vague accusations at the board table. That's just not good professional practice. That made me very uncomfortable. And in fact, I believe that there were a couple of companies considered, and one was not chosen because of a prior relationship. In fact, this one was chosen because there wasn't that prior relationship from the answers we received to our board questions. So I think it's the exact opposite. So I just want to be clear.
Superintendent Stallo?
Yeah. I believe there have been multiple times at this board table that I believe my integrity has been questioned. And so tonight, I, there are no secrets here. The question was asked, how did this vendor come apart? And this fall, we needed a very quickly, we needed to have a comprehensive facility assessment. There had been parts and some different assessments, but there was no data to show that the comprehensive facility assessment had been done. We did not have a prioritized list of projects that we trusted, and we needed some services. We also did use some expertise within our district to support work toward long-range planning. And because of that, we also needed to support to backfill some of that. So we looked at companies that could do the work. One of the companies I worked with, so there was no way we were going to bring those forward. The second company and the company with the contract, the one-year contract before you tonight, is a company that was partnering with my previous district when I was hired as the superintendent. I would hope that any community and any board would expect that their superintendent have expertise, networking, working professional relationships where they have examples of what, when companies did really well and when companies didn't. This is a company that, again, was established before I was hired, so I didn't do the initial hire of this company. However, I worked with them for a lot of years through a lot of construction projects. We always based success on on-time, on-budget, excellent partners who worked and reworked and reworked for years with us. So I don't want this to feel like I've done something wrong and brought something before the board and before this community that somehow isn't transparent. That's the contract that you have in front of you. If you have questions about the contract, please ask.
I will be supporting the contract. Let's see. Director Holmes, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Before I did.
And then Director Basset?
Yeah. And I think now is a great time to take a breath because it wasn't about integrity, it was about transparency. And I asked that question at the work session. And I guess what is important to me is that information be expressed then. Asked again in an email, and it didn't come until one today. For me, it's rebuilding trust in this district because we've had incidents that have come up. You're not, I don't know if we're forgetting that. So if we're starting new and putting faith in leadership, that leadership includes this board, whether people agree or not. We can help carry that message along and talk down rumors. It's about working together. And one company was ruled out. One company, you do have a client testimonial on their webpage. I did not want to bring this up at the table. That's why I asked at the work session, and I asked an email. It's important when you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars and who we're choosing. It matters. That's why it came up. It could have been addressed easily at the work session. I'm not the one making this an issue.
Director Basset?
Well, I just want to say that I think often the public reports of actions at this board may take different turns. I just want to say that Superintendent Stallo, my questions are not about your integrity at all. My questions were about this 168-page document that I think, you know, we could use some further, you know, looking into so that there's better understanding of it. And I heard a question come from my colleagues that kind of went to that. I think it's important for us to actually articulate what we're talking about. It's not personal. It's business. And the business of this district is our business. And so I just want to assure you that, and I, you and I have talked, and I'm not one who's into character assassination or, you know, I'm not saying you're doing something unethical. I'm asking questions that I feel like I have a right to ask. And so for the public, it is, don't run away with that phrase that we're saying, well, your integrity. You know, I'm just saying for you, I want to just tell you directly that I'm not questioning your integrity. You know, when I ask questions, my question is about the business of this district. And that is my, part of my job. And I'm, and of course, I was on the transportation and infrastructure committee. And so it's not a secret that I continue to care about that and want it to continue. I mean, so it's not a mystery for me, you know? And so I think it's important that when we do have that kind of confidence in our administration that we say so. But I think it's also just as important because we have, there have been some things that have happened that do shake public trust. Maybe you didn't have anything to do with it, but there have been some things that have happened. So if we're trying to be transparent and manage our role within the public trust, that's very appropriate. It's our job.
Director Bowman? Do you have something?
Yeah. For me, one of the most important parts of this was the assessment piece of it. One of the things that have been talked about when the board originally put together ad hoc committees on buildings and transportation and those sort of things, the question of how do we even know where we're at? How will we get this information? How will we, we didn't have the expertise to do any sort of assessments in this district that were as far-reaching as the information that we received in this report. And what, I'm supporting this because we got the, I mean, the assessment information is out there. We don't have to guess anymore or speculate about where we are with 2.4 million square feet of school district property and buildings. It is all laid out. I trust our CFO to bring forth those contracts and those working partners that are going to be able to work with what our CFO is working on in budgetary terms. I understand that next, this whole contract thing, what it really does is it provides us with expertise that we just don't have, nor should any school district really have that kind of expertise on board 24/7. It is far better to be able to utilize engineers in a way like this that makes me know that they're not going to be engaged in some sort of crony aspect of, well, we're not going to fix this now because, you know, I can trust the information from this report because it came from people that are here to talk about buildings and their structures and no other type of assessment to those properties, which is exactly what we needed. I really think it was a great way to bring us top-level expertise. I really felt that it provided the board with very accurate and trustworthy information about our infrastructure. And I did not find the length of the report difficult in that we received it on, actually Wednesday, and then our board meeting was on Monday. And it was, you know, sort of repetitious kind of information to get through, but I felt that the report made a great deal of sense. And I felt that the report laid out an incredible foundation for us to at least stand on. We don't have to do everything that's in it, you know? It's all the this and that of it. But the point of it is, is right now, we have something that this school district has not had in, can I say it, 30 years? When I was here the first time, that we had to be fixing buildings and doing things. We, to have a comprehensive assessment is far different than having just a comprehensive plan. So a comprehensive assessment coupled with a comprehensive plan is, in my mind, going to allow us to do what we need to do as it relates to buildings in this district. Board members don't have this kind of expertise. I'm here to listen and learn about what needs to be done. And I really appreciate the report that was given to us, and so I plan to support it.
Director, I mean, Director Wu-Tao will be next, and then, oh, myself?
Yeah. My question is for CFO Kristen. If for some reason we defer making a decision on this today, what are the implications for the board, if any?
The deference today, it's not absolutely mission-critical that this gets voted in tonight. The longer you go, the harder it is. In that, it just pushes bidding season out. It gets us later, you know, January's a great time. Vendors that might be bidding on projects don't have projects lined up at that time. You typically get better pricing if you're out in the market earlier than later in the spring. You get priority as far as calendar go. So the earlier in the process that we can start it, the better off we are. Am I saying it absolutely has to be approved tonight? I am not saying that. The one thing, though, Director Wu-Tao, and I'll let you finish your thought that I was going to bring up, is we do have, and actually, I would feel more... was going to bring up, is we do have, and, and actually, I would feel more comfortable with maybe some of the questions, whether this is the time and space, but to the public component of it, maybe not addressing other questions that have come up to the contract, the 180-some-odd pages. We do have an expert in the room that can certainly speak to either say, I'm full of bunk and what I said isn't entirely accurate, or what, what's within the documents. So, if the board wants to entertain that, we do have people in the audience that can address that. But please, Dr. Wu To, if you have further questions of me, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, thank you. I personally, I, I have enough information to make a decision one way or the other. Just listening to other members of the board, it sounds like people may still have questions or concerns, and I, I don't know how much time or how much information may guide their decision, but I was hoping that in the effort of consensus building, like we've already been talking about, if we can push this action to maybe the next board meeting, so other board members have the opportunity to get clarifications if it can be possible, so that we can take an action on the next board meeting, so that we can move forward with other items.
We have a motion on the floor.
All second.
And it was seconded, actually.
Are you talking about his?
No.
Or this?
There was a one already on the floor.
We have a motion on the board to approve this. And it was maybe suggested not to vote on it, but...
Point of order.
Can we call the vote?
Yes, calling, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to, I'm going to call for the vote. I think, before I do that, I think it's a plus that our superintendent has worked with these people before and has, has had wonderful experiences with it and thinks it's a positive thing for our district. I mean, I think that is not something that we should think of as a negative. I think that is a, a great positive on this. So, we have a motion on the floor to approve this, and go ahead and take the roll.
With pleasure. Director Bassett.
We pretty much called a question, but I did have a comment.
Director Bassett. Yay or nay? We're doing a vote.
We can move on.
Okay, so you're passing for no.
Passing for no.
Okay.
Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hillebrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
No.
Director Long?
No.
Director Wu To?
Going to abstain.
Director Bassett?
I will abstain as well.
Okay.
Motion passes.
So, what we have is three yes, two no, and two abstains. The motion carries.
Point of clarification.
Yes.
What do we do with the motion that Director Wu To?
He didn't make a motion, he was just...
He didn't make a motion, yeah.
There wasn't a motion.
You didn't make a motion there?
No, he was making a suggestion. Director Wu To was making a suggestion, it was not, it was not a motion. All right. Policy Committee is next. One more action item. Oh, sorry. Crystal, the, uh, the City of Crystal Forest Play Area Agreement. Is there a move to approve?
I have a question.
Yes.
I was a little bit confused with the paperwork we got on this. I think that it's two different agreements, is that correct? And is it a land-use agreement and then the project agreement? I, I'm being led to believe we have a, we have a 7D and we have a 7E in the agenda pieces.
7D is Nexus. 7E is the agreement for the City of Crystal Forest Play Area.
Okay, so it is one, because my 7D in here says agreement, City of Crystal, and my 7E says agreement, City of Crystal.
On the website, it is, D was Nexus, E is...
All right.
The action.
Great. It clarifies it, thank you.
There's the resolution for the land-use agreement for the play area and picnic shelter replacement at Forest School. Is there someone that's moving approval of the resolution?
I'll move approval.
And waiving the reading of the resolution?
And I'll waive the reading, reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Director Bowman, seconded by Director Bassett. I don't see any hands up, so let's do a roll call vote on this.
Director Bassett? Yes. Director Bowman votes yes. Chair Evans Becker?
Yes.
Director Hillebrand?
Yes.
Director Holmes?
Yes.
Director Long?
Yes.
Director Wu To?
Yes.
Thank you, 7-0.
Unanimous. We have an agreement. It passes. Number eight, policy. Policy Committee report, Dr. Wu, Director Wu To, Committee spokesperson, can you tell us?
Yeah, based on my distance, Director Bowman has willingly agreed to give the reports on my behalf.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, Director Bowman.
Thank you. We did have our meeting on the 27th, and we brought forth, you have the documentation in your packet. So, tonight, we have for second read, 533, the Wellness Policy will be, this, the updates were, we made updates consistent with the language around parent, guardian, and caregivers, and we also fixed a sentence or two that was sort of a word salad. The number of policies that we're bringing forth as a first read include 410 policy, family and medical leave. What was added was Section 2, General Statement of Policy, and added, and then added to the end of it, the Equity Policy as a reference piece. 413, the Policy on Harassment and Violence. The policy change was we combined the AP and the policy, and we added references, and the description of the changes is that Section D, we protected classification and definitions were added, and we added a letter D, and we added as a reference the Equity Policy to it. Policy number 415 mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. In this one, we combined the AP and the policy, and the description of the change is that we added a General Statement of Policy. And I will add, along with this, it's all the other compliance sort of updates that we got from MSBA, so the statutory updates from the legislature, those sort of things. 506 is a policy on students, let's see, student discipline. We added some references, so we added Policy 102, the Equity Policy, and added the AP 506.1. So, Policy 514 on bullying, bullying prohibition. We added language and added references, and that was in Section V, School District Action Letter D and E, we added language. Section 8, notice, added letter H, added Policy 102.1, the Equity Policy is part of our reference, and added Policy 403 AP, Discipline, Suspension and Dismissal of School District Employee. Item number 524, Policy Internet Acceptable Use and Safety, we added references and we added the Policy 102 Equity Policy as a reference. Item number 722, Policy Data Practices and Data Subject Requests, we combined the AP and Policy Added, and Policy and added references. We added three item, three definitions, A through zero, or A through O. We added in Section 6, Date by an Individual Request, A through J. Added in Section 7, Request by an Individual Subject of the Data. Under Sections 8, we added Costs Added, and C, Data Belonging to an Individual Subject, and then added Legal References. What we have in progress is 501, Policy School Weapons, and I don't think this one is in our packet, though, is it?
501 is not in our packet.
No, that's just an ongoing, that was one that the committee, I think there's a committee of people that are working for us, and I see you shaking your head, yes. 501 will be coming up, but there's a full group of people within the district that are already working on that policy that will bring their work to the Policy Committee, and then the Policy Committee will work with them, and when we're done working with them, we'll be able to move it forward. So, that's really concludes, you will see the number of, you saw it in your packets, and that's our report for this evening. Other than to let me add, I really want to thank Amy and Joanne. They have created a dashboard for the Policy Committee to work with, which, the exciting part about that is, say that Aviva, myself, and Doc, and Dr. Wu To win the lottery one day, and we decide we're just fed up with community service, someone else could come in, step into the role on the Policy Committee, be able to pick up the ball at that point, and carry on with the work. And that was really a focus for this committee to give us, those sort of things. So, I, I, we will also be in that whole thing, tracking, we will be retaining copies of the revisions that we've made so that there'll be a historical perspective of the things that we're talking about and the things that were changed in any said policy as we move forward. So, we finally have an incredible working document to work with, and I think that it really shows in the work that we're presenting here tonight, that we're actually starting to get through all of this, so.
Thank you, Policy Committee, that was a lot. What we need is a resolu, what we need is a motion to approve the, the only policy that was on a second read, that's Policy 533, the Wellness Policy. So, is there a move to?
Some moved.
Moved by Director Hillebrand, seconded by Director Bowman to approve Policy 533. This is a voice vote, not a roll call vote.
Great.
Director, uh, Holmes?
Thank you, so, Policy 533, the Wellness, I just had a question about, um, it's, I believe it's Section 4E, and it's 1A and B. Just clarifying, because we've had this come to our attention before with celebrations and parties. So, are we moving more towards a, it says we'll provide a healthy list of ideas and then suggested foods? So, that, is, is that leaving it open to independent schools, or?
I'm sorry, can you say what page it's on, because I'm...
It is, do you have page numbers like I do in board books? It's 189, it's Section 4E, and that's other foods and beverages made available to students, and then A and B. So, celebrations and parties, and then classroom snacks brought by parents. So, we've got language in there that says they're suggested ideas and suggested food lists. So, are we allowing independent yay or nays by principals at schools? For elementary, I guess, is where I'm really focused in on, is where those parties happen and celebrations. Or are we just urging, urging these things, and if parents bring them in, it's allowable?
I would say this is policy, practice, or, or procedure is up to administration, so I'm going to...
Thank you, I was going to say the same thing. Yep.
Correct. This is the policy, it will be implemented with the procedures by administration.
But I guess, I mean, procedures are different because we're outlining that we would provide suggestions or ideas. So, to me, that's not giving authority to say, no, you can't, because this is the policy.
So, the suggestions and ideas will come from the USDA Food Source, so those suggestions will come through that channel. So, yes, and, so, they can offer ideas. We promote healthy snacks, and we promote having parties and activities that aren't food-related. So, we aren't going to give rewards for food, we aren't going to be handing out things like that. But if there is a parent or guardian that wants to bring something in, we would have a list of healthy snacks through USDA that we can offer them to use as a guide.
I understand all that, because that's clear in here. So, for the parent that doesn't want to follow the idea or the suggestion, are they going to still be allowed?
To bring it in?
Yes.
I am, I am going to say that we, as an administrative team, would have that discussion. I will tell you that in the past, we've had the discussion at principal meetings and have come up with a common answer as a whole, as a collective.
And with that, I just, with fall parties on the radar, if that could happen sooner rather than later, so we can have...
Yep, under...
Because consistency is going to be the best. That's where we've gotten in trouble before, where procedures are being implemented differently. So, if the idea behind the policy is to provide guidance, I just don't want that to be an ongoing issue, because it has been one.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, let's take a, just remind me, was moved, right?
Yes, consecutively, in a waiving of the reading.
Thank you, 533. Okay, let's take a vote on 533. All in favor of Policy 533, please say aye.
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 Opposed? We have Policy 533. Okay, now, we are moving on to Section 9, Administrative Reports.
I'm sorry.
Yes?
Can we not have discussion on the other policies?
Oh, you're right. Yes, we better talk about the first reads. Does anybody have any questions about any of the first reads or comments?
Thank you. Yes. Are you calling on me?
Yes.
So, I'm going to have questions on quite a few, are we just going to go one at a time?
Probably we should do, let's take 410. Anything on 410?
Hold on, I just want to make sure I'm in the same order you are.
I'm just, I'm going the order on the agenda. Nope, move on. 413, Discrimination, Harassment and Violence. Director Holmes?
Um, let me get 413. I put mine in a different order going. So, this is first read, so that's why I'm bringing up questions here at the table. So, this is going to tie to the AP of 403, and I recognize we're moving APs into policies. And the reason I'm talking about that, because discrimination, harassment, and violence also comes with Discipline, Suspension and Dismissal of School District Students and Employees. So, they've got multiple components on here. So, these are all interlacing. If you look at, I just, you're going to have to bear with me, because once we do this, they're going to go back into the cycle. So, this is a huge volume, and I, I'm glad that we're up to date and speed on the languages that need to go in here. But discrimination, harassment, and violence is going to tie to other policies as well. So, having those in conjunction with one another, I don't know how we're going to have that conversation, because this is a business meeting, not a work session, and I know questions aren't really, I can, I mean, I can go through it, and, but...
I was just going to say, I wonder if it'd be more efficient or effective if you sent an email to Director Wu To with your thoughts, and then he could bring that to our next meeting?
Sure, I mean, in theory, right? But this is first, first read, and we keep doing this, and then if I send it there, because we're supposed to have discussion here. So, mine's around conducting an investigation, the termination, it ties to contract language, definitions of assault, intent, all of this, I mean, I guess, comes into play with...
Can I ask for clarity on that?
What I, hold on just one minute, please. It's just difficult to get into this level of detail. I don't know what your, your palette is right now for conversation, but we're supposed to be having conversations in the open, and I guess I see them all interlacing, and we also have, this was work we were doing on the Safety and Security Ad-Hoc Committee, and now that's, that's going to be proposed to dissolve. So, these are, these are, and it ties to contract language, discipline, all of this investigations, it ties to when the school board is getting information. I'm kind of going into all of them at one time, because I have the sense that I'm not going to be able to go through all of them. While I can put them in an email, it's still going to come back for a second read, and then we won't be able to have dialogue. So, I don't feel like it's a very productive thing for me to throw it in email, but I'm also recognizing that we're at a business meeting, and there's a focus, a hyper-focus on time. So...
So, is your point that you don't think that we can pass Policy 413 when it comes to second read because of a different policy? No. As a Policy 403?
It, it ties to it, the wording in these policies tie to each other, and there's a push right now to move all of the APs into policy, and then we're saying, oh, that, the policy and, or the procedure is up to an administration. The way it sits right now, that's not how it's set up, so I have multiple questions because 403 AP is live right now. And there are sections, when we're talking about violation of school laws and rules, they come into here. When it comes to school district personnel, that ties to contract language and investigations, they all overlap, and it's a conversation that we've been put, or the Ad-Hoc Committee has been pushing to have. I don't know how we're going to do this effectively, because coming forward and pushing these all through, they're all very important. Student discipline right now, it says it was revised, what do we have, last was at almost a year ago now, but we haven't really talked about it, so it all intertwines with it.
Okay, Director Bowman?
Um, yes, all policies all intertwined, so that's not surprising. Yes, all policies all intertwined, so that's not surprising. And I think one of the things that I would really like to recommend, because one of the things that's not been helpful on the Policy Committee is, again, the, the lack of clarity, or the lack of, I have problem, you know. One of the things as Policy Committee that's really helpful is when someone can say, section 3, item A, number 1, I don't, this wording, this concerns me. And, and I find great frustration when we sort of talk in the vague generalities. So I think what would be really, really helpful is, if you would like, it would be great to either get ahold of your marked up copies that could come in to the Policy Committee, and we could bring them forth, look at them, work on them, discuss them that way, or find a way to have you yourself come to the Policy Committee and work with the Policy Committee on your concerns on these particular items. Those would be two ways in which we could get through the detail of what you're asking to get through at this point. So.
Can I talk? Right. Director O'Hern?
Yeah, I just wanna, just remind everyone that the policies that are in front of you tonight are legislative updates. So these are not policies that we have gone through administration and revised on our annual basis. So these policies are just the legislative updates that have come through that need to be brought forward to the Board by September. So that's what you have in front of you tonight. These policies, then, will come through again on our cycle as we continue to work through the policies. So as, as Director Bowman talked about, we started with policy in the 100s. We have worked through 200s and 300s. We will now be going into the 400s and looking at that three-year cycle. So these tonight are just the legislative updates. So when 413 comes back on the three-year cycle, we will have brought it through administration. You will be able to give feedback, update the policy as you see fit, but tonight it is just the legislative updates that we are discussing.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Okay. Director Bassett, your hand?
Well, thank you for reminding us about the, you know, it's kind of like, I won't say it's their routine, because going through these and doing the updates is important. So we appreciate that. And quite frankly, I appreciate all the work the Policy Committee has done. Having said that, what we've always believed, and not, not just Robbinsdale, all school districts, when policies come to you, you adhere to or you adopt those changes that through law have been advised, we've been advised to by MSBA, and then local boards then massage them, may make some modifications, they make them their own. And, and they tell you to do that, because that's appropriate. Every district is different. So I think that, but that's a good reminder that, hey, these are the ones that just came through. But I think that one of the things that we've talked about in the past for this Board, and I'll just mention it again, is if things come forward that seem to be a little complicated, maybe they need to go to a work session. Now, and, and because I, and in this instance, I happen to agree that many of these, in the, particularly in the face of some of the things that are going on in our society right now, Policy 413, for example, discrimination, harassment, and violence, and then the bullying, discipline, some of these things, that they're already, we've addressed some things that may have to do with them. It hurts nothing to look at those, to lay them aside, some of the other policies that may have impact or over-relate as well, and then to, to talk about those things, so that we can have consistency. So is that something that would delay this necessarily? No, this is the first read. So to have them come to a work session before they come back for the second read, I don't think is, is unreasonable, quite frankly. You know, so, and it's in the spirit of looking for those changes that this Board may want to make, or those additions that this changes may, that the Board may want to make in addition to whatever MSBA is recommending. And I think not just for these policies, as a matter of practice, if there are some things that there may be differing opinions on, to have them go to a work session and not just come for the first read, come for the second read, and then just go back. Because historically, we would just see feedback into the, into the administration or committee, and they would either adopt them, they'd come back and say, based on the feedback we heard at the last board meeting, here's the changes that we're gonna recommend. I thought we would, we were gonna do that on the equity policy, because we said we were, and just as an example, but it didn't happen. You know, and so, in the spirit of building trust and going forward and looking for consensus, it's important to listen to each other. And if a director is saying, and I happen to agree, there's no point, as far as I'm concerned, in coming up with a new statement, that, you know, we caring about the things that happen in our community, when important issues that relate to that, that might deserve more attention, don't get it. I, you know, I'm just gonna be consistent all the way around. And I think that there, there are enough issues embedded in this that they might, it might warrant some conversation at a work session. And I, you know, and then that's the only place we do have to talk about them. It would be inappropriate, in a committee of three, to invite one director to come in to make it four, that's a quorum. So a work session's the only other place where we can have those conversations. So I just think that that's important, because it also goes to the way we're moving through these policies. Our Policy Committee, in my opinion, has done great work. They've done a lot of work, and they've done a great work. And I love this new grid. I think it's great. But I think these issues that we're talking about tonight warrant some more discussion. It's not the end of the world.
Director Helenbrand, then Director Holmes. And Bowman.
I was just gonna say a couple things. One is that, in actual fact, we will be out of compliance if we don't get the legislative changes approved by the end of the month. That's the first thing. That doesn't preclude us from looking at them further and making changes in October or November, whenever we want, but we will be out of compliance if we don't get the legislative changes updated. That's a fact. Second, most of these are very heavily legally prescribed. There's, there's not a lot of fluffiness to these. These, these are legal, it's sort of like with Title IX, too. There's not a lot of optional input in here. It defines the terms, it tells you what you have to do. There's, there, there's not a lot of leeway in these. And not to say that we can't have discussion, but I'm just saying that they're not, there's...
Not debatable?
Yeah, there's not a lot of debate in them. They're very, if you look at them, they have a whole lot of legal references to them. There's not a lot of room. Where the room is, is in the AP part, but that's not our part. Our part is the policy. So I just wanna, I just wanna say that we really do need to pass these at the next meeting in terms of the legislative updates. And again, that doesn't mean they can't come back to be reviewed again for the other pieces that we all want to discuss, but in terms of being in compliance for the legal piece, we do need to pass, if we want to be in compliance. Now, that's a choice we can make as a Board, but.
Thank you. Director Holmes?
Yeah, and I, I understand the compliance component. I'm just speaking to how we move through that, and then it goes back on the cycle. And Executive Director O'Hern just alluded to that, you know, we go back on a three-year cycle. Some of these, we've been trying to talk about in depth for quite some time, so I don't think it's valid to say, oh, we're gonna put it back on the three-year cycle. And the 300 series that you just mentioned is completely new. We have no series, and so that's, I was actually gonna ask that of the Policy Committee, because that's come up new, and I've been asking about that since April to the Chair, because that should have been a work session item if we're gonna introduce a whole new series of policies. But there are things that are legal in here, because the cell phone policy has it in here. Under new legislation, the Superintendent and School District Administration will establish rules. It says a school district must adopt a policy on student's possession. So right here, we're already stretching it to administration and superintendent. So that's a collaborative conversation, and that's my point here. We need to start having these conversations, because one of our high schools just implemented pouches. And while that may be the decision we're going for procedures, communication is gonna be key to get everybody on board and moving along. And the other thing I have is, is that an equity thing? Did our other high school get it? So there are a lot of things that I think are Board-related and are very timely, and it will help bring the community along. So I have a lot of questions about these. They were put in my packet. I took the time, I went through it. At no point did it say, we're just looking at legislative changes. So it was on here, and I've been told before, first read, you can come in and ask questions. And now I'm being told that I shouldn't be doing that. So we're moving the goalposts, I feel like, a little bit for me, because they all do tie together. And again, when we're talking about, and getting issues throughout the school year on investigation this or investigation that, and then data privacy is in here, how does that relate to the school board? All of these things are tied, and completely capable of articulating this in a work session. So if it's gonna come back, it's gonna come back. I just don't have a lot of faith in that right now, because there are a lot of words that I would like clarification on, or what legal said to bounce off of committee and how they talked about it. So.
I apologize. I thought you guys had the grid that laid out.
Yeah, we have the chart. It talks about the legislation.
Okay, oh, glad it did. I apologize. Is that all you had? Because I put you on the list to talk. Yeah, that was it. I just, I thought we were working from the same information.
Okay. Director Bowman?
Can we get up? Every time we bring policies, then, we have the same discussion, that there's always a misunderstanding between legislative updates that we're doing and more substantive work that perhaps needs to be done in the policies. I, I understand that people have questions, but again, we need to be in compliance with the legislative piece of it. Right now, what this Policies Committee is working on is keeping us in compliance. The discussions that you're talking about are really kind of out of our hands at this point as a Policy Committee, if you will, because it's work that the administration really needs to do. The administration is on, I believe, a schedule of review for things like discipline issues or discipline policies, those kind of things. Those are regularly scheduled events among administration within the district. So that's on that side of it. You know, we, just for clarity, we're not taking, like, we don't have anybody, we don't have our lawyers sitting in these Policy Committees doing any of the work in this. What, the work that we have done in these particular policies right now has been, the administration has gone through, they've attached to it, the legislative updates to bring us into compliance, and the, and, and I haven't seen a work schedule, if you will. I mean, we have our, our work schedule of how we're gonna be looking at policies, and if we do anything, we may want to be attaching the schedule from the administrative side of it that shows, well, every three years, we get together a group of people to discuss policy for disciplinary policy, or the student handbook. Those have been scheduled things that have been, happened regularly over all these years in the district. So we should really probably combine that kind of a calendar. That would be a good piece to know, because I'm also unclear about that at this point. But what we've known is that that is coming up, and it's this next round of review, is to actually review the actual policies. And, and we've kind of been explaining this throughout. Right now, what we're trying to just do is be in compliance. We know that there's other work that needs to be done in these things, and I think that what we need to do is have discussions on how best to do that work, before we spend hours at a meeting, sort of, in vague conversation about it. So I think that if we can pull together how administration should be working with the Policy Committee and with the Board on the more substantive issues, that might be also a good thing that we need to be doing. But, you know, trying to, trying to nail down the way we work has been in and of itself a two-year adventure in, in just whatever. So we're still nailing those processes down. But again, for tonight, we just need the legis, we just need the legislative updates approved. And then we, you know, that's what we need. We're not saying nobody's gonna talk about anything, we're not saying this and that. But again, I'm not, I can't talk about this stuff until I have the discussion with the administration piece pulled into it. And I don't know if the administration piece at this point, a year and a half into Dr. Stallow's service to the district, or less than a year and a half, a year and a couple of months, if those administration pieces even exist at this point. I, I'm not sure, because everything is being rebuilt from the ground up. So that's where I stand in that.
Thank you. Director Long?
Yeah, so for me, it, it kind of feels like listening to this conversation, very like power hoarding, like one side is right, and like a goalpost keeps being moved, because we say, in one instance, we're supposed to talk about it at this time, and then when that time comes up, we don't talk about it. I know, we've had several conversations wanting to talk about this cell phone policy, and wanting to have a discussion as the Board about it. I even have notes that I typed up from when we went to our training from MSBA in January. And my notes say here that the cell phone policy doesn't, the district doesn't need to have that in place until March 15th of 2025. And that came from a lawyer, who I attended a cell phone, I attended a session on cell phone use in school. And he also gave some recommendations. So in past conversations, when we've had these conversations about some of these things, where, where have the notes or the ideas or parts of our discussion gone? It's like they just disappeared, we didn't have them, and then things keep getting changed. I, I just really feel like it just goes back to me again about who on the Board is, their viewpoints are valued. Why can't we have discussion about these things when certain Board members choose to bring them up? And then why do things, and rules keep changing for some of us, but not for others of us? So that just gets really confusing here. I don't know. Then where, where, where am I supposed to go, and what am I supposed to do? And why? Why can't we continue to have conversations about some of these things? These things need to be changed now. You know, I sit on another Board, and I also talk to several school Board members within our area. The other Board that I sit on, they have no problem having discussions like this, making modifications to the policies as they come up, even if it is just a legislative thing. They figure, since we're looking at it now, why don't we make the changes that we need to make? And as far as, also including community, too, in it. So then I get here, and I hear a constant, you can't do this, you can't do that. Oh, well, but these people can do this, these Board members can do this, these Board members can do that. But you, no, these are your rules. Now this is changed. Now we gotta do something different. So then that leaves me to believe, why does the goalpost keep moving? And what's going on with the power hoarding?
What I'm hearing is, in order to be in compliance with the state, with the changes in state law, we need to change these policies that we have up for the first read. Changing them and approving the, making those changes and approving those changes does not preclude talking about them at another time or in a work session or further. But what I'm understanding is, it will be important for us to vote to approve these by our next meeting. Yes?
So I just, I want to say a few things. One is, at the last meeting, I, and someone can go back and listen to it if they want, but I'm pretty sure what I said is, it'd be really helpful if people sent in redlined, you know, if you redlined it, so we could do it, so that we had that written down, because that, it's true. When, when I hear things, it's much harder for me to retain it for our next meeting. So I did think, I'm pretty sure I said specifically, if you could redline and send in written what you need, and I believe that we were clear that Kenneth, Kenneth Wuto is our person to send it to. So I'm pretty sure we said that as well, but I'll just reiterate it. So nobody's hoarding anything, nobody's asking, and if, if you'd prefer it to come to a meeting, I'm happy to step out of a meeting, so someone else can be there, if it's better to, to have the verbal conversation. I'm happy to do that. So there's no hoarding, there's no, I don't need any power, I'm not interested in it. Anybody else can take my place for a meeting, or, or on the committee if they prefer. However, it is much easier if things are in written format. So that is one thing that's helpful, especially when it comes to just verbiage, or, or adding or taking away something, those kinds of simple things. I know you're talking about something much more complex, when you're talking about things that interweave, and when we don't have them all in front of each us, that's also really hard for me to track. I'm just gonna say that for myself. So I think that is also a bigger process that we need to figure out. But I think this also comes back to, again, I think the bigger conversation is, we don't agree on our role. And so that's what this bigger conversation is, because I see policy differently than you see policy, or you, or you, or you, right? And that's, I think, the bigger problem that we're having right now. And so, back to the professional development piece, I think we really need to think about, how are we gonna resolve this? Because that's why we're having problems right now, in my opinion, so. that's why we're having problems right now, in my opinion. So. That out there in space.
Director Long, did you?
Yeah. So, yeah, my follow-up question to that was, so then when will these come back? And some of them need to be sooner than later. Like, the school year has started. We've been trying to, some of us have been trying to for over a year, talk about this cell phone policy. So when? When is that going to happen? In a work session, when? Did I put it on our to-do list for agenda setting?
Is it the will of the board to discuss the cell phone policy at a work session?
And there we go.
No?
Yep, there we go. That proves my point.
Well, if the majority of the board does not want to discuss it at a work session...
That proves my point.
I'm asking.
Nothing.
Is that what people want?
No.
I'm not seeing that from four people. Okay. I'm just asking.
I know, but I didn't want to get, I didn't totally understand that exchange, but I'm going to, I don't want to get into it.
Okay.
I do have something.
There was somebody before you.
I was, Director Wuto, you haven't spoken for a while. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I think a lot has been said. The processes that we've put in place at the policy meeting that we've discussed at the board meeting, I think, are pretty straightforward. And so I'm not sure why we are still having a lengthy discussion on how to make corrections or changes that board members or the board wants to propose. If you forward it to us in a writing format and we don't make those changes, then that warrants further discussion as a board. If we don't see anything that is concrete, just because you've been talking about it for so long and nothing has happened, that's not changing unless you make it concrete. So please forward those informations to the right people. Let's review it as a committee. And if we came back to you and said, based on what we have looked at, this information will not make it into the policy, and the board decides that we should discuss it at the work session, then we will make that decision. But just saying you've been talking about it without giving us anything concrete to work on is really, really difficult to move us forward.
Thank you. Director Bassett, then Director Holmes.
Well, I think we all agreed on that last time. I mean, that's common sense. I mean, that makes perfect sense. However, I mean, I think the questions that they came forward initially was, we are in the first read historically. And during the first read, directors can ask questions. That's what it's for. And so, so a director here was going to add, had some questions. She had, seemed like to me, it was kind of a lengthy list of them, but, you know, that's okay. And but I think the reminder to send things in in writing is a helpful reminder. And so I think we should try to move toward that. But I don't think we should confuse the fact that a first read, which is the questions that a person wanted to ask, were there. Now, the fact that we are getting a little long and we have some other important business to take care of, leads me to want to say, I think that in deference to the fact that we do need to pass these within September, I think to, you know, make a decision that we want to have if not, if not during September, in October, to come back and talk about some of these policies that go to, that are interconnected in a way that affects the bully, some of these policies that are on the table to talk about. Because violence, bullying, all those things, there's a continuum. I think they're important, you know. So I don't think that that's important enough for the board can just to say, let's talk about this in October. Because you could always come back and revise a policy. There's no rule that says you can't. But in the interest of meeting our deadlines, we can do that. But in the interest of building consensus and caring about what the other, what my fellow directors think and hearing some of their concerns, there's nothing stopping us from deciding that we want to talk about a set of policies in October and go deeper. And then any of us who have questions about some of those policies, we can put them together in a grid and we can send it out and we can know what we're going to talk about because it gives us adequate time. So, I mean, I think that we can have a win-win, quite frankly. I don't think everything has to be, I mean, that's what I'm striving for. We need to be, trying to work toward win-wins. And there's no reason why if a director has done their homework and they have legitimate questions, that those questions can't be posed, particularly if we have a protocol that says during first read, you can do it.
Director Holmes?
So again, mine is, we're not supposed to be doing policy work in email. Like, if I had a question minor here or there, I understand that. And there are some of those. I have a mix of both tonight with me. So the ones that I see that are word questions, I can submit that, like 413, it says discrimination, harassment, and violence. But then down here, we're talking about assault. So yes, I can bring those in and I will put those in email. But the broader discussion stands because the phone policy, it's not just me talking about it over and over again. It's when I have brought it up, it says, oh, we will have a work session on it. So you can't talk about it now, but we will get to it. And then it doesn't come up again. So it's not repetition because I like hearing myself talk. It's because the process hasn't been lined out. And there's still, we just came to terms with that and said, oh, yeah, it's still a conversation. So I would hope that those of you who have come on newer, not that you're new and it's a bad thing, but that these are conversations that were going on that predated you and there was no resolution to it. So that for me is accountability. And beyond that, a lot of these reference the student handbook. And the ad hoc committee, the safety and security ad hoc committee, we did flush that out. There are not viable procedures there. There wasn't a schedule of events there. That was a conversation that I don't want to be having at this table, wanted to work and then bring the work forward, but that has not been allowed. So we haven't finished our work. We identified a lot of gaps and now it's been halted. And so I'm not okay with it. And I will use my voice to stand up when we're talking about student discipline and discrimination, harassment, and violence. And these issues have been talked about at length. And we identified gaps before. So it's maddening to be here in almost three years and not have a legitimate conversation about one policy. It's really, really frustrating. So it's honoring the work that was being done in an ad hoc committee where we did try to identify gaps and working with new leadership to make it the best process. And I identified that in the policy. Anyway, I just, again, for me, it's clarity and making sure, and we should be further along in this. So it's frustration. And then we, I know how it goes with the phone policy because, yeah, we did pass it January and then everybody goes, well, we just passed it in January. Sure, maybe that was an update with the legislative language that was referenced by Director Long, but we didn't talk about it again. And now here it is again with another tweak and we're still not talking about it. That's, I'm not doing my job. I don't have time to wait on these for three years. Board terms are four. And to say that I haven't talked about any of these is pretty upsetting for me.
Director Wuto, did you have your hand up again?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bowman, and then maybe we can...
Thank you. I'll be quick. I just want to point out that our ask tonight from the policy committee, and I will make sure that we are very clear the next time that we bring something, that we should be stating in the first read, that this is for legislative updates only. And that clarity needs to be added to our agenda because that's what the ask was from the committee tonight. These are the legislative changes that we need to make. Now, regarding the other issues that are being discussed about policies, I would recommend that we pull together a professional development work session around policy discussion. And that would be my recommendation, that if we really want to get better at collaborative work and all the other things that we've set up here, then why don't we take and couple professional development with a day or two, day and a half of policy discussion. And that might be a really good use of our time because we're piecemealing it up at the table. People have hurt feelings. We're throwing allegations around at each other, which is not helping the situation. We're talking negatively about one another. For me, as a policy committee member, I'm here to get a legislative, approval on policies that need a legislative update. If we need to carve time, which we do need to carve time, but the administration needs to have the time to prepare for those discussions, I think we just do it in a day and a half work session and get it all done at once.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on. And I want to make it clear, these policies will come forward at our next meeting for approval because we need to get the legislative updates in them. It does not preclude discussing them at a work session. Get your questions or your suggestions to the policy committee. Work on them. All right, administrative report, Superintendent Dr. Stallow.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Evans Becker and school board members at Robbinsdale Area Schools. Our mission is to inspire and educate all learners to develop their unique potential and to positively contribute to their community. Our collective work is focused on this mission. And tonight, I'd like to share some of the work in which we have been engaged. I also want to acknowledge, begin by acknowledging the tragedy that impacted our neighbors at Annunciation Catholic School and Church last week. Our hearts are with their community. On the day of that tragedy, I was in schools and I immediately went to the two sites that our middle school staff were at, as well as the site that our entire high school staff was gathered during professional development on catalyst strategies. Being in that space where our staff were focused on connections and support was grounding in a very difficult moment. It reminded me how important it is to intentionally deepen ways to build relationships and support, not only for our students, but for us as a community. The catalyst training provided to both middle and high school staff equips educators with practical, evidence-based strategies to respond to students' needs, manage conflict, and create calm, supportive learning environments. Teaching these skills directly contributes to safer schools where students feel seen, heard, and supported. I also want to acknowledge the outreach we have received from our local police departments following the tragedy. Their check-ins at our schools reflect the value of strong partnerships we maintain with our local law enforcement and our common commitment to student and staff safety. Taken together, the commitment of our staff, our professional development in social, emotional, and safety practices, our, the work of our safety and security team, our district crisis response team, our use of the standard response protocol, and our community partnerships all reinforce that safety is for a foremost responsibility. As a matter of fact, yesterday, I received a text from a superintendent at another large high school that said, happy start of the year. I just wanted to say that you have a great safety website and we are going to copy it to the best of our ability. Way to go. This is the foundation that allows us to celebrate our students and to start the new school year. As we turn the calendar to September, it's important to highlight that September is School Board Recognition Month. I want to pause to acknowledge the dedicated leaders who serve our Robbinsdale Area Schools. Our board members give countless hours of their time and energy to guide our district forward. Your commitment to our students and families is appreciated. The work you do is not easy. It requires vision, courage, and a constant focus on what's best for our young people. On behalf of our students, staff, and families, I want to thank you for your leadership, your partnership, and your dedication to student success. In the district priority of staff investment and impact, one of the most exciting moments of the start of the year is welcoming new teachers. And we were able to do that two weeks ago. They had professional development at their sites as well as district-wide orientation, learning about who we are and how we do things. We're thrilled that they said yes to Ardell and we're excited for their impact into the future. In the district priority of staff investment and impact, on August 25th, we officially launched the 2025-26 school year with an incredible kickoff celebration at Cooper High School. Our theme for the year, Take Yourself On, Believe, Belong, Become, set the tone for an event that was filled with energy, purpose, and joy. One of the best parts of the celebration, go ahead and forward it, Molly, thanks, was how much our students and staff were at the center of it. Cooper Senior Chad Hill did a wonderful job co- emceeing with me. We were honored by the presence of our American Indian royalty students. We celebrated our Teacher of the Year, Marcus Hahn, and we were inspired by the performances of the Cooper Marching Band and Vela Boche. It was a powerful way to start the year as a district family, back one, sorry, to lift up the voices of our students and staff and to carry forward the message that each of us has a role to play in believing, belonging, and becoming. In the priority theme of collaboration and partnerships, I want to highlight the tremendous success of our recent vaccine clinics at Meadow Lake Elementary and Armstrong High School. The August 26th clinic at Meadow Lake served 121 students, breaking the Minnesota Department of Health record for the largest community clinic ever held. To put that in perspective, the previous record was set just last year at Armstrong where 95 students were served. Over the last two years, we've partnered with MDH to host five of these. This work ensures that our students have free and equitable access to vaccine, which is essential for both their health and their readiness to learn. Again, this is a great example of strong partnerships with state and community organizations. In the priority theme of staff investment and impact, last week, our district prepared for the year ahead with a series of professional development sessions. These sessions were designed to equip teachers and staff with effective, usable strategies that could be applied on the very first day of school. Highlights include training on the newly adopted Wit and Wisdom Elementary ELA curriculum to strengthen literacy instruction, a session focused on culturally and linguistically responsive teaching strategies to better support our diverse student population and the catalyst training that I spoke about. The investment in our educators is an investment in our students. It reflects our ongoing commitment to providing high-quality instruction and creating learning environments where every student can thrive. The start of the year is always an amazing time. We often talk about how excited it is for our students to return, but it's also really excited and lots of joy as our staff return. I was able in the first week of, last week, to spend time with district staff at their all-staff meetings where we could listen to the joy of their laughter and observe teams diving into school improvement plans and instructional strategies. I was impressed by the intentional planning of our leaders and the full engagement and commitment of our staff. There was a clear sense of purpose, both in community building and a strong focus on academics and outcomes for students. Throughout the summer, our custodians and facility staff have been working tirelessly to prepare our schools for the year ahead. Look at the floors in this picture. Their work includes essential repairs, thorough deep cleaning of classrooms and common areas, and countless behind-the-scenes tasks that ensure our buildings are safe, functional, and welcoming spaces for our students. When our students walk into clean spaces, it sets the tone for learning and belonging. So I just want to thank, take a moment to express my gratitude to our facilities and custodial teams for their hard work and dedication. I walked into a staff meeting last week and the principal was sharing kudos of how great the building looked. And he and several other staff that I talked to that day said in all their years in Robbinsdale Area Schools, their buildings have never been cleaner. Our custodial and facility staff truly make a difference in creating the learning environments our students deserve. Last week, every one of our schools opened their doors to welcome students and families for the 2025-26 school year. The open houses are a great tradition and a chance to bring people together. Just as importantly, they're about connections. They allow students, families, and staff to begin building relationships that form the foundation of a strong school community. It was really fun to see the energy and joy, especially in the places that the students were doing some of the leadership at the open houses. And in the priority of academic achievement, all the work, the open houses, the professional development, the preparations for our buildings, it leads to one thing. And that was what happened yesterday, the first day of school and new learning for our students. Yesterday, we welcomed back grades one through five as well as grades six through nine. Today, our seventh and eighth graders, along with the 11th and 12th graders returned. And tomorrow, our kindergartners will begin their journey with us. Walking through our schools, the feeling was unmistakable joy, excitement, and possibility. I saw students and staff taking themselves on and creating the conditions for believing, belonging, and becoming. There's nothing quite like the first day of school. There was laughter and there were tears. There were smiles and students and some parents who needed some comforting. And as a district, I'm so proud of the work of our staff and the way they have started the year by creating the culture for everything we'll accomplish together this year. So I want to thank the entire staff and families and our kids for their hard work. The first weeks of school always bring some challenges as we're monitoring enrollment, as we're dealing with transportation, as we heard a little earlier, and with scheduling. We're continuing to watch numbers daily. And we'll engage with our principals to take a look at section sizes for both general and special education. Special attention right now is being paid to Plymouth Middle School and Robbinsdale Middle School because of some high section sizes. However, we also know that last year, between August and November, we lost several students at those two sites. But, and we've already added some additional FTEs. at those two sites, and we've already added some additional FTE at PMS. But we plan on making additional decisions after seeing where attendance is as of Friday, September 12th. So what I've witnessed this week is an entire school community stepping up, taking themselves on, helping everyone feel a sense of belonging, and setting the stage for each person to learn, grow, and become the very best version of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yes.
When I walked in tonight, I saw there were special parking places for people who needed to register.
Yeah.
And then I saw, like, lines of folding chairs outside and inside for people who needed to register. Are we, like, getting a whole bunch of registrations now?
Well, it looks like CFO Hoheisel would like to speak to that.
We, yes, we are. Typically, this is a pretty busy time of year. I would say kudos to the enrollment staff and everybody else who has stepped up to help the enrollment staff. We have headlines. I want to say, as of today, and we've been pushing through a lot, our enrollment right now is, like, 10,273?
Five?
Eighty-five. Okay. And that we had budgeted 10,000 now, so which is great, right? We're a couple hundred above. We anticipate losing, we do lose kids throughout the year. But we are off to a fantastic start, and yes, we have new people coming to enroll with us, so that's great.
Thank you. It looks like it was positive out there.
It is.
Thank you.
I don't know that they feel so positive with some of the lines that they have to weigh in, but...
They've had delightful weather.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Next up are the board committee reports.
We do have a couple other administrative reports.
Oh, excellent.
Yep, no worries. Thank you. I know that Executive Director O'Hearn is going to give a brief staffing report, and Executive Director Williams has also got a report.
So, just a point of clarification, because I started the timer for that second part, was the discussion we just had. Okay, so that wasn't...
Start from a fresh start.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go over it? Director Long?
Yeah, I just got confused by who was timing.
That was me.
I knew this one was going to be a little longer, but there was a whole lot going on since our last meeting.
I want to make sure people have their time, you know?
Yeah, start them fresh. Go.
All right. Good evening, Chair Evans Becker, Board Directors, Dr. Stallow. I am happy to share an update on staffing for the 25-26 school year. Based on enrollment needs, the district is increasing FTE allocations at Zachary Lane in kindergarten and in first grade, at Forest Elementary in third grade, and at Noble Elementary in kindergarten and fifth grade. At Plymouth Middle School, staffing has also been adjusted to further support instruction. We've added 0.2 FTE in sixth grade science and another 0.2 FTE in social studies, ensuring Plymouth stays within the board-approved class-size ratio. In order to align staffing with enrollment shifts, two teaching positions were reduced at Sonnison in first and third grade. While the adjustment is necessary, the school will continue to maintain strong instructional support to meet the needs of all students. In addition to classroom staffing, we continue to prioritize recruitment for nutrition services, custodial operations, and student services. These roles are essential to maintaining a healthy, safe, and supportive learning environment for students and staff. Our current open positions as of today, we have nine special ed educational assistant openings, eight nutrition service openings, nine custodial openings, 1.5 sped resource teachers, one RISE teacher, 5.1 speech teachers, one nurse, a 0.2 sixth grade social studies, and a 0.2 sixth grade science. Overall, these staffing changes and recruitment efforts reflect the district's ongoing commitment to aligning resources with student needs while maintaining high-quality services across all schools. While we still have openings, we are in a better spot than last year when we had twice the number of openings at the beginning of the year. Thank you to our leaders who have worked tirelessly interviewing and filling positions. We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Not jumping ahead, who's up next?
I have a question.
Oh, you have a question?
Yeah. So I'm just wondering about, like, some of the job postings. I've gotten this question from a couple people. They said that they've looked at them, but it doesn't describe what the position is or what it would entail. And so I wasn't really sure how to direct them or what to tell them when a position says it's posted and it's center-based for special ed.
So a center-based classroom or teaching position? To a... What is the question?
All the posting said was "special ed center-based." So they said, "What does that mean to me?" I said, "I don't know. I know we have center-based programs," but there was no description about what the job...
Which center-based classroom it was.
Yeah, or what the job entailed, you know?
Okay. Let me look into that. It didn't say what... Okay, let me look into that. Thank you.
Yeah, and then if you could let me know so I could follow back up with those people.
If they're interested in applying, could you have them email me?
Director Holmes. How difficult is it to fill those 0.2s?
It depends. I just filled the 0.2 music position, and someone actually reached out to us that was interested in it. We have been doing some recruiting with other districts to see if they have a 0.2 social studies or a 0.6 social studies. So I'm talking to surrounding districts to see if they would be interested in a job combo. So it isn't easy, I'm not going to say it is, but there's some alternative methods that I'm trying to use to see if we can fill it.
Okay. And then one nurse out of how many are we staffing this year? Three?
This is out of the four licensed school nurses.
Executive Director Williams, please.
All right, thank you. Good evening again, Chair Evans Becker, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. Just want to give a brief update. I know you heard during listening time about the family literacy program. While we were not able to bring it back to its original, you know, sort of standing, I am excited to announce that we were able to co-locate one of our adult academic classes at the New Hope Learning Center. So we will have co-located instruction for a child and for an adult, as well as a parent education component to that class. This resolution came out of the collaboration between myself, obviously Dr. Stallow, the leadership over early learning, as well as the teachers of family literacy, identifying what the key needs were for the parents. And one of the key identifying needs was that they wanted to be able to and needed to be able to go to school with their children for various reasons, especially in today's climate. So we were able to solve for that now. That class will begin on September 15th is the target date. We are in the process of identifying who the instructor will be, but we have some good leads on that. So, yeah, I'm excited about next steps with that, and we've been communicating with the families of family literacy, the alum, and we've gotten some families who have already registered. But with the class being co-located at New Hope Learning Center, we were also able to open it up to other families at New Hope Learning Center who are also multilingual. So there's other opportunities there as well for different students to enroll in that class. So that's my update.
Director Holmes.
I just want to... I am appreciative that something was resolved and that they came and spoke this evening in support of that and the efforts and the collaboration and how it came about. And I think that is the power of talking to each other, because enough of us have been asking questions about it, and they came and spoke endlessly about it. And that's listening to one another, and that's finding solutions in a community that means a lot to one another. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more hands. Director Long.
I was wondering, in one of their proposals, they had suggested some other funding sources that they could look into, wondering if we are willing to partner with them to look at those other funding sources to see if this is something that we could expand.
So in our conversations with that group and their proposal, we were able to, actually, I can go through each one of those items that they identified as potential funding sources and talk about, you know, the viability of, you know, A, applying for those opportunities, and then sort of what the funding caps were for those opportunities. For many of you who don't know, my previous background is in adult education. I've worked in that area for 15 or so years, so I was familiar with some of those streams of income that they referenced. Not saying that... So A, yes, we can look into those opportunities if they present themselves. B, but we are also cognizant of things that happen at the federal level with some of those funding streams, as well as at the local level. So I think we have a good resolution going forward now, which is more sustainable, but we will always look at different funding opportunities for that and for other initiatives as well.
Thank you. Any other hands? Thank you for that. Okay. Board committee reports, the board reports. We had listening time tonight, so I'm going to start with Director Bowman. She was the facilitator for listening time.
Thank you. Tonight, we had 10 speakers. They spoke on about transportation. There were two speakers on safety. There was one person for the Cooper Alumni Association. There was one person that spoke about gratitude, equity, and collaboration around the family literacy program. Another speaker that spoke on the positive forward movement for the family literacy program. Two speakers that spoke on superintendent support and board interactions. And one speaker, and I'm pulling these titles off their pages of what the subject was, was encouragement for upcoming decisions and accepting one another. No, yeah, encouragement for upcoming decisions. So those were the 10 speakers that we had. Regarding my report, I had policy committee, and then I just wanted to thank the superintendent and thank the staff that worked on the welcoming event at Cooper. I get to tell a funny story about myself. Most people think I have absolutely zero feelings, which may be true in many cases. But at the end of the event, I went up to congratulate Dr. Stallow, and I was so overcome that I actually burst into tears because I was so completely touched by the student voice that was there. I was touched from the very beginning of coming into a building where even the windows were sparkly. I watched people's reactions as they walked into the gymnasium, and almost everyone that walked in there went, "Oh, it looks so nice." So it was impressive to see Dr. Stallow share the stage with a student for the entire presentation. It was wonderful to have our Native American students that came, the cheerleaders. It was everything I've ever wanted to see at a welcoming of new students and even more. And I'm not even ashamed at this point that I showed my feelings and burst into tears, but I thought I'd tell it at the table so that no one could talk behind my back about that. So thank you very much. It was enjoyable, and it was emotional for some of us. So thank you for the work that went into it. It showed me that there was a boatload of work that went into it, because there was never a leg, never a leg in that whole hour and a half. So thank you very much.
Director Helen Brandt.
Yeah, so obviously, there was the policy committee. I also went to the Brooklyn Bridge Lines for Youth meeting, where they had their review of the executive director and then updated us on the progress of some of their priorities, including the Reimagine Black Youth Mental Health, their Elevate Youth, and just the overall communications, and then went through their budget. And then also the welcome, you know, it's not every welcome that has Stephen Colbert, or at least, you know, a YouTube video of Stephen Colbert. But it was wonderful, and thank you so much for inviting us.
Director Long.
Yes, I had District 287 board meeting. It started out with a board PD, where I got to learn about special education finances, third-party billing, and things like that. It was interesting to find out that approximately the last couple years, each year, we've approximately lost about $7 million in tuition billing for our special education budget. So hopefully, we can fix that by recruiting more of our special education students to stay within our district to get those services from us. Then also, we had the board meeting after that, and one thing that we did talk about at the board meeting was the superintendent's goals. So we were able to give the superintendent feedback on what we thought about the goals and what we wanted her goals to be.
Then?
Yep, thank you. Great. I was at the district opener, and I totally agree with what was said. It was powerful, energizing, fun, wonderfully organized. I mean, it was super-duper.
Director Holmes.
I did not make it to the district opener. I had work, so I was unable to attend, and I want to say welcome back to everybody. For those of you who are back in schools packed with students, remember to get your rest. I remember how tiring that is. So thank you all for showing up for our students, and students, thank you. And not everything may go smoothly the first couple of weeks, but hang in there and talk to the adults you trust and work through any issues that you have at home. So thank you all for being part of 281.
Bassett.
I want to thank Ms. Myers for coming to the school board meeting tonight and do listening sessions alumni for Cooper, the old Robinsdale High School. And she, that lady packed a lot into a couple of minutes. She said a lot of things, but she talked about the history of it. And I guess, as I listened to directors who actually were at the opening, the energy, and if the energy this year was anything like the energy last year, it probably was. It was phenomenal. I mean, it was last year, too, and I think I told you that when I saw you gliding around. Remember, I said, you know, I mean, superintendent, you know, it was, you know. So in any case, you know, and I can't help but think about the words that we just heard from this web a few minutes ago about how important it is and the passion that people have that I hear talked about from this table a lot. And it's a good thing, and it doesn't just start and stop here, it's all throughout this community. All you have to do is go out to a community event, and people, if they know who you are or if they see your information, they'll accost you and talk about the district. And for the most part, it's always positive. It is. And people who've been here, their kids went here, their grandchildren, all of that. So it's worth it. Always has been, it always will be, you know? And so I'm encouraged that we got through a meeting tonight. We had discussion, and I think, I also appreciate that we had comments from a couple of the other leaders in the district who came and talked to us tonight. I think the fact that our enrollment, and I've been up to this building a couple of different times, and every time I come, there are people sitting out in the hallway and sitting outside to enroll their children. I just want to say thank you, community, for your continued trust. It's not perfect, but I think I see people trying to work on it. And as long as people are trying to work on it in good faith, I think we can get there. And so I'm hoping everybody will have a wonderful year as well, and I'm looking forward to maybe doing some classroom visits that I've never been able to do in my 23 years of serving, because I've always been working. But I'm retired, so I will make sure I check in with the superintendent and check in with the principals, but I'm looking forward to being able to visit some of the classrooms. You know, it's been a long time, and I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you. Director Wutu.
Yeah, I have started a series of MSBA trainings in the last few weeks, which are very enlightening about the roles of the board and how to differentiate that from the role of the administration and the superintendent. I also do want to use the opportunity to thank the leadership and administration for all the work they've done in the last few months. I will say that a few months ago, most parents, including myself, probably would have said Robinsdale School District wouldn't be the employer of choice. But based on the leadership we currently have, it is very clear that people are watching and they are trusting what we are doing. So thank you, Dr. Stallow and your team, for what you've done. You are already breaking records, enrollment records, vaccination records. Please keep the energy up. Staff, thank you for believing in our students.
Thank you, Director Wutu. Also, at listening session today, the head of the teachers' union and the head of the principals associated... principals' association read a statement of support for our superintendent and for her administrators. And it was just very powerful that they're circling around you and holding you up. Okay, this brings us to a closed session to receive confidential legal advice pursuant to the attorney-client privilege at Minnesota statutes 13D.05 subdivision 3B in regard to School District 281 versus the city of New Hope. So do we have to have a move to go into closed session? Okay, are you moving it?
I'm moving.
Okay. Moved by Director Bassett, seconded by Director Bowman. All in favor of moving to closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are moved to closed session, and here's the big news. The closed session is in here, so if you are not on the board or our attorney that's going to be speaking to us, you are going to have to wait outside. We'll let you know as soon as it's over, and then you can come back.
To take part in adjournment, I'm kidding.
We're back.
You're not going to do that.
Okay, we are back. Our closed session is over. I would entertain a move to adjourn the meeting.
It's not moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
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 None opposed? None opposed. We are adjourned.
Now we get a five-minute break?
Now we get the five-minute break. Now we get the five-minute break. Oh, here we are. We're back. It is time for our work-study session to begin. It is 10:47 still on Wednesday night. And people in the room are me, Greta Evans Becker, and we'll go this way. Kim Holmes, School Board.
Ellen Bassett, School Board.
Renee Bowman, School Board.
Aviva Hillenbrand, School Board.
Caroline Long, School Board.
Walter Kenneth.
Karat Wuto, School Board.
Thank you. Okay, the purpose of this meeting, this special session, this is not a special session, it's a study session. We just have one agenda item, and that agendated item is our superintendent's evaluation. But opening is the... Do we just start? Do we just go to that part? Okay, take it away. Barb Dorn is going to be facilitating this session, right? Okay. We can have the doors open? We can... I think we are ready to dive.
Is the mic closer or am I okay?
Kenneth, can you hear Barb?
Not right now.
Okay.
Closer.
Really close, talk right... Maybe tip it up a little bit also.
If I speak here, is that okay? Is that better, Director?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you. First and foremost, I really appreciate the opportunity to come back and meet with the board in Robbinsdale Area Schools. I have a vested interest in the success of this board team. You have a passion and a candor that we do not always see with all of the members, particularly with the superintendents. So I've always appreciated that about this board. I see my role tonight to facilitate a conversation. This is a work session, so it can be relatively informal. I know you have already visited about this. I believe Dr. Stallow has already sent out a revised set of goals based upon some conversation you had at your last meeting around the goals for this coming year. So I'd like to cover first and foremost just the format of what I see this work session being tonight. The first thing I'd like to do is have just a brief discussion about goals being used in evaluation, because they can be open to interpretation. Goals can be subjective, they can be objective, they can be measurable or not. And the larger and the more complex the system, the more difficult it is to find goals that everyone is in agreement upon. So I want to have a little conversation about that and some of the trends that we've seen with other districts in terms of the measurements that they're using for superintendent evaluation purposes. I also am a big fan of simplicity and keeping it simple if possible. So I think what I'll do after we have a brief review of sort of goals and standards and elements is I'd like to ask all of you to think very high level. And I'm going to give each of the board team members, so all seven elected board members and Director Stallow, the opportunity to just tell me your sort of goal areas. And I know you were going to be coming back with some key points and things like that, so maybe you've already done that. But I'm going to take some quick notes. And if each of you could just share with me your top three goal areas that you would like to see Dr. Stallow address in the next year. Not two years or in five years, but in the next, well, actually, in the next 10 months. So these are one year at a time, performance goals. So we're going to come back and ask each of you just for your top three. And then I think my job is just to facilitate and ensure that people feel heard, hopefully come to a consensus. It's a work session, so you won't be voting. But reach some agreement on what we need to do moving forward, because it is already two months into the fiscal year. And so you have 10 months left in order to correct the superintendent where you would like her to focus her performance expectations on this coming year. I have one question before I start. I can simply facilitate and see who wants to speak and when. Or I could do that, and I could consider this some professional development. If you have questions on best practices about evaluations, or if there are anything that you're talking about that I might have a thought on relative to some of the other districts I'm working with. Or I can keep all of those things to myself. So I don't want to insert myself into your conversations with suggestions or ideas or feedback unless you would want it. So where does the board feel about that? Should I simply facilitate? Or do you want me to bring in some best practices if it happens to feel appropriate? I feel like if we ask for it, because I mean, that's what... There are sessions. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm sorry, couldn't quite hear you, Caroline.
I said if we ask for clarification, or examples, or best practice, that then to bring it up. Because people have done that in other sessions where they've asked, you know? I mean, we weren't given the option, but people have spoken up for what they needed in other sessions. Let's do that then. Okay. So feel free to ask me at any point during the conversation today what I've seen elsewhere, or what districts are doing in similar circumstances, or don't ask. I'm not going to insert myself into your discussion unless you invite me into that, okay? All right, so as far as a big overview, one of the trends we've seen the last few years is goals becoming trickier and trickier to reach agreement upon. And again, the larger and more complex the system, the more difficult that is to reach agreement. Because words are... They're squishy. I use that word a lot. And everyone has a different idea of what those words might mean. Also, the more complex your system, the more difficult it is to come up with measurable goals, depending upon where you're at with the systemic issues. And so that's something that also is to be considered. We have seen more districts using the standards, which is one of the things you did last year, and you're doing it again this year. Because for some districts, the standards in lieu of goals is a more clear-cut path for them. Now, Dr. Stallow has prepared goals, and then evidence, and the supporting standards. So it's multi-layered, which is unusual. A lot of districts choose only just the standards. But this has fleshed out a lot more with her offering the goals and the evidence to that as well. I think this is ambitious. It's a lot, and I said that the last time we met with last year's goals as well, particularly in year two. And yet you have a lot of things facing your district. So I think the combination of the goals and the standards and the elements do make sense. The challenge is going to be, what does that mean, and how are we going to measure it? And that is not a new challenge. A lot of districts do face that. But again, local control matters a lot to MSBA, so we won't ever tell you what you have to do. We'll simply make our recommendations. In larger districts, and I tend to think large districts tend to be 10,000 and more, typically what happens with the evaluation process is a superintendent will develop something like this, perhaps not this robust, and bring that to the board for feedback. And then the board asks questions, discusses, asks for modifications, and then they come to agreement. It is highly unusual for a school board to initiate the conversation around goals, because school board members have not been in the superintendent's chair, other than two. I know of two school board members in the state who were superintendents. Otherwise, in your position as elected official, you do not know what the day-to-day work is of a superintendent. So coming up with those goals to begin with is challenging. It's usually the superintendent bringing them forth and then having the discussion on it from that point. So if I... Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, Director.
So I think, well, I'm glad you're starting to talk about goals. But I think that what is helpful for me is that, because one of the things that's been part of the culture is for there to be a collaborative discussion about the standards and, because we've kind of gone down that path. The standards, and then what are the side effects of it, or, you know, the standards and then the features in that. You know, that document, it's actually your document, MSBA. So we've used that document for about four or five years, predating Director Stallow, I mean Superintendent Stallow. That discussion was a collaborative discussion between the board and the superintendent. The superintendent would come in and talk about... And so I think process also is a challenge, has been a bit of a challenge, because some people, I don't know, but it seems to me that some folks see it a different way. And when you bring in some of the feedback that I might have as a director, people feel like it's being antagonistic or adversarial, and it's not. I mean, it's just the collaboration has been something that I have valued highly and has been successful. Because it depends on both the board and the superintendent having it coming together and having an agreement. There was an occasion when the superintendent came in and no goals were set, but we all decided to, you know, do something else, and I won't go into that, that's past. But the collaboration piece is really kind of... So somewhere in your presentation, we talk about that, because it's... And I'm not necessarily talking about, you know, I mean, this whole question about goals as opposed to what are the standards? What's the mark we're trying to hit? That's really kind of where I'm at. What are the goals and what are the features within those standards that we're trying to achieve? And then if there are some additional goals, what might they be? And that's a collaborative conversation. So that's not trying to... Well, I'll stop there, because I don't want to get into a lot of editorializing or anything else. I'm just speaking about what I would like for us to talk about in this meeting, because I think that that also could be a place where directors may be missing each other, in addition to even the superintendent. So having an early conversation about what that process looks like is helpful, so everybody's on the same page. Not necessarily what's happened. So that's unknown. And then we have, you know, a couple of new directors, so I don't think that's helped. The only reason I say new is because we haven't all worked together. So it's hard to gel if you don't have the ground, you know, lay the foundation, and then you try to move around, it's going to be...
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. And collaboration is one of those words that is also difficult to define, because that is different to everybody. So what does collaboration mean, right? The definition of that is always open to interpretation. I think what might help, not only to build a collaborative environment, but also to find out where people are at, is to just start with areas. If you look over the next 10 months for Robbinsdale Area Schools, and I know we've talked about priorities in terms of what's a high priority, what's a higher priority, and what are the highest priorities for this district over the next 10 months. That's what you want to form your superintendent goals around for a performance evaluation. They are still responsible for an immense amount of work outside of what you are prioritizing for evaluation. But we want to simplify it, and we want to prioritize it. So if each of you, and it doesn't matter what order we go in, but if you have given some thought to what areas you would like the goals to focus on, and you can use whatever language you want to use for whatever those areas are, I'm just going to take notes, because I have a feeling there's a lot of agreement amongst this board team about what needs to happen in the next 10 months. I think you have some clarity of vision, and I don't want to get caught up in the... The specificity sometimes takes away from the recognition of the commonalities. And I do think you have commonalities. I think you know what you really need focus on for the next 10 months. That's my perception, anyway, from watching your meetings and knowing this district a little bit. So is there anyone who'd like to start and tell me what maybe your top two or three focus areas would be for goals? And I don't want details, I just want the area. Who might like to go first? Director Holmes.
Broad terms, tell me if it's not clear. Academic or student learning, financial operations, and then... I don't know what the word is that's encompassing. It's engagement, it's culture, it's community.
Academics or student learning, financial operations, and engagement, culture, community?
Culture, community, it's hard to... Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Who's next? Director Bowman.
Maybe it's the lateness of the hour, but I don't have any problem with the document as it stands as created by Dr. Stallow. So I am of the... Sorry, so Kenneth can hear me. Let me start off. I don't have any problem with where the document, with the document as it stands right now, as it's written. I, similar to the goal she did a year ago, part of goal-setting is a wait-and-see. And I feel that Director Stallow did a really good job last year with creating her goals and being able to document her meeting those goals. So maybe I'm unclear about the assignment at this point, but I don't have... I think what this formed, what her goal sheet does at this point is, to me, it really explains that there's groundwork to be built, and there's many different components that are kind of in the air. I see it, it seems to be well communicated in this, so I'm willing to have it... I think it's perfect as it is. So that's just my, you know, that's where I'm at with this. I don't have a problem with it. I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Thank you. Director Hillenbrand.
Is it cheating if I have four?
Oh, I didn't know we could have four.
You can have a fourth if you'd like.
Well, I asked. I mean, I think one is, because obviously statutory operating, debt, dealing with that. Another is the reimagine, you know, the process of rightsizing the district. And then the climate and culture piece. And then I would just add literacy, science of reading.
Thank you.
I didn't know we could do four, so I did three.
Sorry.
All right, I'm a rule follower. Okay, I also agree with Director Bowman. I'm fine with the goals that our superintendent did. But if I only had to do three, I would do, implement the vision goals, develop the SOD plan and implement that, and build the culture, climate, and trust in the schools and community. I would just take three of hers.
Okay.
If I had to do three.
What was the very first one again? Implement the vision goals?
Implement the visioning goals.
Implement visioning goals.
For rightsizing our district and making it...
Okay. Director Holmes, do you want to have a fourth?
Huge work. I'm Holmes.
Director Holmes. I'm sorry, I thought that's what I said.
She's asking you if you want a fourth, because you...
Do you want a fourth goal? Oh, you can think about it.
Yeah, well, because, yeah, I mean, we're going to talk back and forth through this, right?
Right. Okay, thank you.
So we have Director Wuto and Director Bassett.
Yeah, I would say the vision goals would be my top priority as well. I mean, the finances of the district, and then community engagement, because ultimately I believe that is going to bring out student outcomes as well.
So the visioning work, the finances, and the community engagement?
Community engagement, yeah.
Correct, okay. Thank you, Director Wuto.
So SOD and finances probably equate for the same goal?
Yeah. Yeah.
Director Bassett, you want to go next?
I can. You know, I didn't say I had any problems with the goals in the first place. I just have an additional thing that I'd like to see us put, give some attention to, and that has to do with academics, and actually even the measurement of progress. Systems, I think, I'd like to see improvement in our systems that really kind of give us indicators of how our students are doing, however we put that, however we frame it. And because I think, and then have, and then work with the board to help marry that too, because how can the board can't do its monitoring role if the board doesn't know where we're monitoring? So, and I think that's a joint kind of thing. We don't want to just be monitoring things up in the sky. I think we mon, and monitor is not a bad thing. It's, that's how we're going to have indicators about how we're doing, you know? And we don't have any, you know, as far as that's concerned. And so a joint conversation about what are those indicators, what are those metrics, what are the monitoring process we will go through? That, as far as I know, from everybody I've talked to over the years, that's a standard part of what the board does, is monitoring. So, I mean, it's, but for me, having the academics rise up to help the administrat, and that's where the expertise is, if, you know, the superintendent and all the administration have ideas about actually what systems we even have in place. They change from year to year. If we're not getting updates and information about that, and if we're not understanding what are, what are the, what are the things that are helping us know we're moving forward in terms of the academics for these students? Now, however we can fit that into a goal, and I think in the last meeting we had, Superintendent, that's actually the way I frame my comment. You know, I mean, you know, I'd like to invite you to take a look at it and see where do you think this fits in terms of the academics? Because that is important to me, and I don't, I'm not saying that it's to me exclusively, I think it's maybe important, I think, well, I believe it's important to everybody, you know? But I'm just speaking for me. It's important for me, and to have goals in here so I can understand where are we doing this monitoring to see how our students are doing? That's important to me, given where I see, across our district, I don't care about the whole nation and the whole state, I don't care about, you know, I do care, but, you know, my focus is, what are we, where are we now in Robbinsdale, and how will we know we're making progress academically? That's it. And, and actually leaning into her expertise and her cabinets, or whoever that she assigns, you know, to help us craft that together, so we understand it, and we're unified in how that works, you know?
Thank you.
Well, I didn't go yet. I guess, for me, academics, definitely. I feel like that's why we're here. I remember my first couple of years here getting criticized about, why isn't the board speaking about academics? You know, that's important, especially when we have legislation around academic skills that we have to have met, training for our teachers, so definitely that, to make sure that's working.
You put that in the same goal area, training for teachers, et cetera, with academics?
Yeah, it just, I'm just using that to justify why I'm saying academics.
Okay.
And then community. I think, you know, over the years, there hasn't been a lot of openness with community, you know, they feel kind of shut out, especially when incidents happen. Like, how do we change that and, you know, become more transparent, and more willing to figure out how to have those tough conversations publicly? And then, yeah, definitely finances, since we have that issue, and the values that we place on money, you know? I would definitely, like I said before, like to get out of our rental properties, so that's a huge financial thing.
Okay. Thank you. So thank you for indulging me in the simplicity of this. And the reason I ask that is I am seeing the same thing here for the seven of you, and I've read through the revised goals. I, I think these are in there, it's just not worded exactly the same. So maybe we can take a look at where these tie to the second version of goals, the ones that you have in front of you now. And they were shared with you.
Agreed.
Via email, as well as, are they in their board packet or somewhere tonight?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, for example, I'm hearing lots about finance. That one, I think, just about everybody. A lot about community engagement, relationships, trust building, all of that. That's a second goal area that is different from the other. Academics is coming through loud and clear. I think one of the challenges for you, and this is one of the things that districts in your position often face, is you are, you are almost literally building the plane while you fly it, as a system. And you have a big and a very complicated system. So systemic issues do take much longer to change than the ones that you might do one year at a time. So I want to be sure that whatever the board is going to discuss and potentially reach consensus on is, again, 10 months' worth of goals, not two or three years. Because strategic plans, of course, are your two, three, four, five years out, and the superintendent is building this one year at a time with the board. So some of the, the larger things might take more than a year. You can make progress toward, and I think the first year, there was a lot of foundation that needed to be laid, and you've had, what, six superintendents in 10 years? That causes disarray, without question. The lack of continuity in the CEO position of your district has challenged this district, and I think you're dealing with some of the fallout from the changes in leadership. Everyone's done absolutely the best they possibly can. It's simply a matter of six and 10 years is highly unusual. So that first year, there was a lot of work to do. The second year, there is still a lot of work to do, and yet you are definitely making some progress. So is it okay with everyone if we take a good, hard look at the actual goals that Dr. Stallow proposed, and see where we can tie things back in here? Okay, so, and Dr. Stallow, please feel free to speak if you'd like to, I don't want to speak for you.
I just, there are just a couple of things. I think that, first of all, it's nine months, because my timeline, I like it to last year, my evidence will come to the board on June 2. That's June 2. So it's nine months. I think the complexities, I would, I would argue, as difficult as year one was with determining and identifying systems and a lack of foundation, I think bringing in some amazing leaders to ask a second and third question in areas that I simply didn't have the capacity to, to do last year, has undercovered greater work in some regards. So I would say the complexities of, of this district with a lack of systems, with statutory operating debt, with trying to build that foundation, I can't imagine a district with this much work and this much complexity. So I want to state that. I think the other thing that I just want to acknowledge is the monitoring piece. There were, and, and part of this is, again, building that district of continuous improvement. The place we didn't finalize and hope to by the time the CACR, the World's Best Workforce, comes to you is, is the scorecard. I think that'll make a difference in thousands of reasons, including lots of reductions, but that's not yet where we want it to be. But I would say, in the academic piece, there's two primary areas that are called out in the current goals, and I know we're going to talk through them, but I just want to preface. In Goal One, that entire first evidence piece is all around academics, it's around gathering 17,000 people's different ideas of what is the vision of academics and learning and the student experience here. So some of that is program system work that won't be measured by a particular metric of MCA tests or whatever, but, but it's a different kind of goal. And then I think in that, in the goal around the district system of continuous improvement, that's where in each of those priority areas, and again, the board monitored nine different teams that were doing that work last year. And a lot of that was building, where we'll start implementing some of it now, still building, though, quite frankly. So I think, you know, the first one is, in the academics, it talks about implementing the new ELA literacy curriculum, right? Part of that's tied to the science of reading, as, as Aviva was talking about, certainly around literacy scores, which is part of the, the World's Best Workforce District-wide goal. So I just wanted to make some of those connections as you talk about it.
Okay. Did you want to say, you want to say something? Okay. Let me know if you do want to speak, I certainly don't want to just keep rolling ahead here. So I think when you look at these goals, if I'm going, if I started at the back, there's four goals now instead of three. Weren't there three when you first took a look at this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the fourth goal is around the culture, climate, and trust, which pretty much all of you did say was a priority area. Goal three is the new one, and that is more touching on academics, I believe, tying to the district system of continuous improvement. So that is the new one. Goal two is the finance and the SOD goal, so I think that goal area is in here. And then the first goal is all of the above. I think this is an, from what I see, anyway, it's an engagement piece, and it's an operational piece, because I believe that the board's going to be making some decisions based upon input from this group, and it's a cross-community group, correct? So it's not only engagement, but there's some operational discussions that are going to be pretty tricky, I think, coming out of that group, that you're going to have to maneuver in the next nine months. So those four areas, does anyone feel like, when you did mention your top three or top four, that it's not in those four goals? You know, specifically, you mentioned literacy, but...
No, I think my concern initially with, or, I actually think, I don't really have a problem with any of this, but the, the thing I was struggling with a little bit was actually just the measurement side of it. But then, as I look a little bit more at the rubric, I see that it's actually got really clear. I mean, I just, I don't like things that are too objective, but as I really look at it, it's, it's not as objective as I thought it was at first. It feels like it actually has a lot of clear, it's, it's clear, the rubric is clear about what it means that you've met the, at least the standard, right? So the, I think it was just confusing for me with the goal and the evidence and the standard, and then the, so now that I'm looking at it again, I'm seeing the definitions of the standard and how the standard is met actually are pretty, pretty clear-cut. So I'm feeling a little bit better about understanding how it is really measurable, so.
And I think the, the standards, we call that the roadmap. We try to make that as clear as possible, and that's based on the competencies for superintendent licensure. It's different than SMART goals, though, and I know a lot of people coming to this planning wanting SMART goals, and measurable is the key word for everyone in there. The challenge with your district, with where you're at right now in year two of a new superintendent, is some of the things that you, you want and you obviously need, I always think of it as like putting a roof on a house, and it has to be solid and high-quality, and yet you can't put the roof on the house until you got walls. Well, I don't even know if you have walls yet that you need, because you're just, the foundation is there, and it's getting stronger. I don't even know if your foundation is quite done yet with all of the new positions and new administration that's come on board. So you are going to have the whole thing. I don't know if logically some of that can be done in nine months, and so I want to keep it realistic also, and yet stretch goals. You always want to stretch your leader to ensure that they are doing the most they can. I appreciate that, because I believe you were interested in SMART goals, Director Hillebrand, correct? Or something like that, more numbers maybe in here?
Well, just more measurable, because I, yeah, it's, it's more that, if you just look at the goals and the evidence of performance, right? So the goal, successfully implement, the first one, well, that one's actually a little easier because it's measurable, and so is the SOD one. But when you get to say, let's look at Goal Four, invest in improving culture, climate, and trust, like, how do you really know? Like, how do you measure that goal by itself, right? Then when you go below to the standards, seeks and provides opportunities for input, okay, well, that's nice that you, but then it says, uses input in decision-making processes. Well, that we can see, right? That's measurable. Not only, okay, you saw it, that's nice, but did you do anything with it? Okay, that is actually something we can really see and measure, and give us the evidence of that.
Okay.
That's where I feel more comfortable, I can, I can say, yes, I see that, or no, I don't, right? That's where I can feel comfortable making an evaluation.
And see, for me, I, that's not clear to me at all. Number one is not clear to me at all. It's very ambiguous to me. All the other ones are too. I mean, I would like to see something more, because then I'm going to sit there and feel like, no, this wasn't met, because it's too, you know, too open-ended for me. Yeah, I don't see it that way.
And that, that's okay. Again, the strength of a board is in the seven different perspectives from the elected members. So that's okay.
Yeah, so I would like to get it more concrete, because I don't want to sit there and be like, no, I don't see it that way, and then she's like, oh, yeah, it's like 100% that way. Well, then, of course, we're not going to match on what we're going to say. So how can we figure out how to come to someplace where it's stated more in a way where our, our responses to it are going to be pretty similar?
What might make it more concrete for you?
That's what I want, you know?
So what would help? For example, if you could rewrite something, what would you need to see in here with Goal One? Because that's a very foundational goal, and it's also very ambitious. What would help you, Director Long, feel like it's measurable?
Well, first of all, I don't even know what this implementation plan is, you know? So, I mean, to have something in there that is so like, what is it? What does it all entail? What are the details to it? How much of it am I going to have input into this thing that is stated in this goal? How much input am I not going to have into it? How much has already been mapped out? How much is not already mapped out? What are the different, I mean, I could go on and on and on about the questions just about this one little thing, because I don't know what that is yet.
Right. That, that's the building the plane while you fly it, and it is frustrating when you don't know all of those answers.
So for me, I couldn't, I, I would need a whole new goal, because I can't measure that. I don't know what all the things are that are going to play into that. Maybe if I had a document that said, okay, these are all the things that play into this, then I could be able to tell you, okay, maybe word it this way, or move this word here, or that, but I, I don't, because I don't have whatever this recommendation is that we're supposed to be giving. I don't have that.
Could we work it backwards to make it more sense? So the goal is, the goal is to successfully implement the, whatever the school board decides on from the visioning, but in putting that aside, to look at the evidence of the performances, they're much more clear. And so knowing that those are what we're expecting, that makes the goal more understandable. For example, the superintendent will provide a plan of action outlining the development and improvement of the systems, the beginning stages, the visioning of academics, teaching and learning. Superintendent will lead the process, design, and implementation of school closures. When you look at the evidences of performances, one, two, and three, that, no matter what is decided by the board for the things that need to be implemented, that's the evidences of the performances, that makes the goal seem more clear, doesn't it?
No.
Oh. Works for me.
Director Bassett?
Well, I was thinking of two different things, but the one goal, Goal Number Three, and I was really, I was looking at that. The superintendent will lead and collaborate with her team to provide progress and monitoring reports to the board, inclusive of the priority work, and, and, so inclusive, I think that's inclusive of is, is a place that could be, because, and, and that same idea, and I'm going to come back to that, but I'm going to say that same idea in Goal One, Evidence of Performance Two. The superintendent, superintendent leading the process design and implementation of the school, of, you know, the school closures and all of that, to include the boundaries and all of those things. I believe that those are things that are in consultation with the board, because when it comes time to implement, she's going to implement it. But to land in what the design is, and the closures, and the boundaries, and all those things, I've always known that to be a collaborative process with the superintendent. All the data we ever get, that I've ever gotten, has come from the administration and the superintendent about those things, and then there's a discussion. We, no one has ever said, go off superintendent, just do that. And so if we say that it's the implementation, the way this is written here, the, you know, I mean, the superintendent's doing all of that, and the board has no... mean, the superintendent's doing all of that, and the board has no, has no, no say-so.
If you back up to the goal, you, I thought...
I saw that, but I think that there's room for ambiguity and differences in interpretation. And I think that's sometimes where the board gets, we have different ideas about what that means. And I'm saying, and so I think that kind of place to act something specifically about the places where collaboration with your school board is vital on some of those things. You know, I mean, am I going to go and get all the data, and I'm going to say, we should go this and that and the other? No, I'm going to listen to everything that comes back to us, you know, and including all, inclusive of all the community's feedback, and all of those things. But to ignore the political element of it is folly. Because that's why we're here, is because the public expects that we're going to be listening and working with them, and sharing our viewpoints with our superintendent. And so that's not to be taken lightly. And that just has nothing about questioning the superintendent's leaderships, abilities, skills, and all of that, has nothing to do with that. For me, it doesn't. You know, it has to do with, that's a collaborative process. The implementation, then, once we agree, you don't get any argument out of me, once we kind of come to a place where we all kind of understand what's going on, and we all agree, I'm on the team. And I'll give you another example, because in this one here that talks about, I was looking at this one, standard three, and was that the one? Goal three, no, it's on this performance, goal three, those indicators about the team progress, monitoring, and so on and so forth. For example, if the superintendent might come and say, I think one of the best indicators is that a mid-year check on, you know, the, I heard world's best workforce, and that can be a good indicator, but that's totally outside of the control of the board, and our world's best workforce hasn't been in on the win. And included in the world's best workforce is the systems accountability that's been folded into that, and achievement and integration, and it used to have a significant community component. That's all changed. So the world's best workforce, and the frequency of its meeting, and all of those things, which are places where that collaboration around what do we want to do about achievement, and where are we with our achievement, that's lost. You know, I mean, and so because it is, what are some reasonable places that we can say, these are places that might be good indicators for us to kind of test, see where we are? I mean, it's just, I mean, that's all we're, that's all I'm saying, is that we, where are some indicators we can get some, you know, attention on where we are? And that's, we're going to go to, we're going to need our administration to tell us that. We're not doing the work every day, you know? So I think, my, my view is that I'd rather leave to the superintendent, quite frankly, to go, I mean, live into the, listen to the feedback that she's gotten, if there's anything that you, she think, you think, Terry, that you would change or not, I'm interested in hearing what you think about it. You know, because this is what you're getting feedback from all of us for. You know, because for, I think the majority said they didn't really have any problems necessarily with the goals, you know, but where people have said, I need more specificity, see what, see where that can happen? I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't, if we didn't have anything, we're not starting from scratch. We've got some pretty good language.
Director Wu, toss his hand up.
Yes, please. Director Wu?
Yeah, I think, I don't want to necessarily change the process of our lead here, but I'm beginning to have the same understanding of where we were during our last meeting before we left, that specificity really matters, and I'm not hearing that. I think when we left our last meeting, we all agreed that we will come back to today's meeting with concrete goals and examples that we may have, that we want to see on this data. Now, if there are things here that we disagree with, please give us your specific goals that you want us to replace them with. If not, I think it will be useful to just go, goal by goal, let the board decide, yes, keep it, no, take it out, so that we can be a little more efficient in doing our work today. Because I haven't, I have not had any specific goals, I have had the same talking points of suggestions and things that we want to see, but nothing that is concrete. Please tell us what you want on this data, if the goals here don't match what you have on paper. I believe that was the agreement we had, and we all expected to be at this meeting with those examples. So I suggest that we go, goal by goal, and if we decide that that goal doesn't work, and somebody has an alternative goal suggestion, let's discuss it as a board, and if the board decides that replaces what Dr. Salo has already written down, then we replace it. And if it doesn't, we get to the last goal, and then we can move on. If not, I believe we are going to be doing the same thing we did the last meeting, because I have not had any concrete quite yet. Measurable or not, I haven't had any. That's just my perspective, anyway.
Thank you. And going goal by goal is a great idea, but first, Director Holmes?
Yeah, I'm just following your lead. I have specifics with me, I'm, you are telling us where we're starting, so that's what I'm going on. And then the last one, I think you have us on goal one right now, the broad one, if I remember right, because you came, you went backwards.
Yes.
And then we're focusing kind of there, and what would make it, I am hung up on the reimagine Ardell Vision 2030 team, because that is one component of the information we've been provided, and actually, we haven't been provided it yet, so we're setting goals for something that's still three weeks away. I think that's irresponsible. So it's really about all of the information we have. It came from a 24-25 survey, it came back from stakeholder surveys. We have a wealth of information. This is one component, and yes, the time has been spent on it. It doesn't mean my decision or my vote will be cast just on that team's vote. That's why I can't get comfortable with this. We are still talking about something that we haven't even seen. And again, that's a, it's, it's, it's one component of what's going to go into this, because we started budget recommendations or cuts 24-25. So that's where I am there, and I am, the monitoring role really speaks to me what Director Bassett was saying, because talk about going around circles, we're going to end up in the same place again, and I think that's what Director Long and Director Hillebrand were getting into. One person understands it, so that's why we've got to put the focus in, in my opinion, to SMART, SMART goals, because that's going to give us the breakthrough.
Would you add anything to goal one, then?
Yeah, I would find some numbers there, you know, I mean, when you're talking about this, so can we tie it to, you know, retaining staff, effective teachers? That's, that's kind of a continuous improvement for me. Or can we tie it, I, so I'm walking this line very carefully, because I've been told that that's management, and I shouldn't be doing that, but I, like, specific things? Or do we have surveys that we want to increase our response rate on, whether it's students, or staff, or community? Something like that, something that is measurable for this area. That's where I'm going.
Thank you for that. So one thing that might help, because I think there are different interpretations of a goal, evidence, and standards. So I'd like to think about it as a reverse funnel. So for example, the goal is, if the funnel's going upside down this way, so it'll look like a pyramid, actually. I think the goal is the biggest, largest, broadest piece, and that is where the board is most involved, in laying that foundation of what is needed, what is happening, and then it begins to narrow down with the evidence, led by the superintendent and the administrative team. And then the standards are sort of the tip, where when the evaluation time comes up next June, you'll do the one, two, three, or four based on that. So if you can think about your role as being down here, and the goal is the big picture, so board direction is very important there. And then it starts to segue more toward the superintendent and the leadership team working on performance, and then the standards.
But just to that point, that's where my hangup is, because I understand the funnel, and the goal is the broad piece, but if you're disagreeing on the evidence, it doesn't allow you to get to the top. So because as the governing body, it, we do have to say, because she can say, yes, I did do that, and we can say, well, that's not the evidence piece that we were looking for, that doesn't align. And so what this does is really limits us, because when we get into the evaluation discussion, you can talk about other components, but then real quick, you're told, nope, it's not in one of these boxes, so you can't talk about it. So you can say all day long, yes, there's other components that go into the job, but we don't get to talk about that if it's not on this paper, and I'm not okay with that.
Would you like to further define? Thank you for that. For instance, a plan of action, because the plan of action would be the evidence. And right now, it is, so the evidence performance one, provide a plan of action. We don't even know what that might look like yet, because we don't quite know what the school board direction's going to be based upon the reimagine board study, stakeholder feedback. Is a plan of action specific enough, or do you want to define what that plan of action's going to need to look like? We're almost trying to forecast into something that we don't have enough footing for yet? Does that make sense? Director Bassett?
I think just as you correctly pointed out, the turnover in top leadership over the last however many years, and I'm talking about the superintendancy, but it also encompasses whoever our chair is, the chair as well. So I mean, that's part of the, the duel that is recognized, that's neither here nor there, good or bad, it's just, so the leadership is not unique to just the superintendent. So there's been change and turnover there as well. So putting that aside, I think that to expect that this board, given some of the challenges that we have had, are going to be able to get to a perfect model is, is to where we would want to be in three years, is just as unrealistic to expect those things from our superintendent as it is from this board, especially since there's seven board members. So I do think some latitude, and some, maybe it's a marriage of what we have before us, the superintendent has provided, and that's kind of the direction I try to go in, you know, and what can we do in this area, and can, what can you help us, how can you help us get there? I really like that approach better, instead of this, it's got to be pure, it's got to be this, it's got to be that, because it's not going to be, because we're still trying, we still have, trying to figure out, well, we can have some professional development so we can get better, you know? And so I don't want to have our superintendent hamstrung, because we're in this situation. But I'm also realistic enough to know that there are some indicators that we can know. And so having the superintendent identify some indicators would be helpful, because as then leaning into her role and implementation, her knowledge as an experienced seven-year superintendent prior, and given the framework we have, to figure it out. I mean, I'm saying as a framework. Now, that doesn't preclude what anybody else is saying that they want or need, I, I'm not into that, I'm just talking about for, how I see it. If we're going to give that same grace and understanding to our superintendent, I feel like that same grace needs to be extended to this board as we try to figure out what's the best model. And all in the service of consensus, you know, trying to have some kind of consensus, and trying to move forward, and fairness, to be fair to our superintendent, but fair to everybody, to the different directors' concerns. You know, that's, that's how you go forward, you know? And so I think that we may, it may not be, it's not going to be pure this time, because it already isn't. We're already not on the timeline we want it to be, you know? But the good news is, we're talking to each other, and I don't hear a bunch of yelling and screaming and finger pointing. That's not productive, you know? But, but, you know, so that's all I'm saying about that. I think it's not going to be pure, so in a sense, it's not going to be pure, I don't think that we have to try to make sure we pigeonhole everybody, I don't, I don't have to pigeonhole Director Long into what I think. If it's reasonable, and if it works for the superintendent, and if it works for us moving forward, I'm cool. You know, and, because I did have one example. For example, what would be, what I would like to see, and I'm not really wedded to this, but it was an example I thought about. What percentage of our teachers have been trained, if we ascribe a certain pedagogy or curriculum, what percentage of our staff are trained in it? I can't tell you how many times I've been excited about some initiative we're doing, only to find out that 10% of the staff have learned it. You know what I mean?
Director Salo?
So just as, as you're all talking, I just, I have the, where the scorecard draft is today, the second, and so, right, the percent of licensed staff who are implementing culturally and linguistically responsive strategies will be at 90%. Increase the percentage of licensed staff implementing the foundational literacy resource aligned to the science of reading with high fidelity by 10 percentage points. So it's, again, there was zero of this. So part of what we worked in a very collaborative way with leaders was creating this, right? Haven't landed on it yet. Part of the work, now that I've got a much stronger assistant superintendent, a much stronger leader in teaching and learning, a much stronger assessment person, taking this with those three key people, so we've been meeting the last month and saying, okay, there are, I think, 104 indicators on this. There can't be 104 indicators that we measure. So, so it's, it's, it didn't get done. Like, it's, it's a, it's a great draft, and there was great work, so I think some of the metric talk, I guess what I want to say is, like, this isn't a foreign concept to me, I've, I've been around the block a few times. We have those indicators in school improvement plans, in the world's best workforce and all of that. This piece is going to help us as a district, and we're not there yet, I'm hoping in the next month we can get there. So I don't know, I don't know how that helps the conversation. I just don't want y'all or the public to think that I don't understand measurable outcomes that we want to track, and all of our strategic priorities, some of it's engagement data, some of it's retention data, all of it.
So to that point, though, thank you for sharing, Terry, I really appreciate that, because what, what that says to me, when I think about the level setting we just did about all the turnover we've had at the top, and the fact that we still are relatively new ourselves, then it makes sense to say, I've got this framework that's started, I don't think will be done till X-whatever, and then I'll come back and update you. I mean, you know, it's not, it...
And that's why I added that, that last goal.
Well, that helps me, I mean, I'm just saying, that's the kind of stuff I need, I need to know where we're going.
And that's why I added that last goal, because the goal for this, for last year was to create the entire system. We've created 93% of it. The scorecard's the piece that didn't totally get done, so now this year, it's implementing the system. So we've got to land on some of these goals with the new assessment person leading to get us there.
So Director Holmes, and then why don't we go goal by goal, and we'll get through this, and if the majority of the board is okay, because nothing's going to be perfect, I know that for sure, it never is. And this is a fluid document, obviously, you'll check in, is your check-in in December or January, your mid-year?
January.
January? But what do you check in at that point? This?
A fluid document.
Because everything is changing day by day within a school system this big, and it will never be perfect, and if you try to perfect it on this early end of it, come January, you're going to realize it's not perfect, you're going to want to make modifications to it anyway. As reality kind of unfolds day by day in a school district, things are going to change, and some of these will be much easier to meet than others. And how you define a plan of action, how you define process to establish a bond referendum, that'll be different for all eight of you. And yet, when you talk about it along the way, not just in January, but perhaps at other meetings, because I think some of these, we're getting regular reports from the superintendent, that was one of the performance evidences, you will continue to learn and adapt and understand this document better.
Okay, so as we go along, and you're saying this is a fluid document, and we can make changes to this fluid document? Who initiates that change, and then is it just by one person, and then we're all like, oh, okay? Or is it like a consensus thing that happens? Or can anybody, I mean, what do you mean by who's going to be?
Thanks for asking that. So some districts at the mid-year, they realize that they're off track, that they are not the right priority goals, so by a majority vote of the board is how that occurs. It is not just one person, it is not the superintendent by any means, it's not the board chair, it's not the executive.
Majority vote of the...
Majority of the board, correct. It would be something, because you're going to vote eventually on this as a board to adopt it, correct, at your next business meeting, perhaps? And then it's, then it is what you have, and if you need to make changes... And if you need to make changes, you'll have a better sense of what might need to be changed by the mid-year. And if you need to change it, depends how much time you want to spend changing it versus doing it. Some districts spend way too long planning and planning and replanning and revising, and they're not doing and doing and doing. So sometimes something is good enough because you're headed in the right direction and you know where you're going and you have your vision and you have some really great themes. You're heading that way. So it does take a level of trust that we're moving in that direction together. But it is not one person that would change this by any means. It would be a majority of the board. Director Holmes?
The scorecard draft is what I'm talking about. Hearing you talk about that, that's language that resonates with me right now. In no means did I expect that to be perfection. If that was communicated in some way, that's an error on my part. I knew it didn't exist because I hadn't seen it. So this is telling me that's translating some of that into here that gives it tangible, something to hold on to. Nobody's asking you to knock it 100% out of the park like off of student retention or teacher retention. I'm not asking 100%. I want to know that the decisions we're doing as collective leaders is moving the needle in these areas that we just identified. I think that's what people are looking for. That makes sense. It doesn't need to be done. We can say, this is where we are and that was my expectation with a new leader coming on board. Baseline it. Look, we didn't have a scorecard. But now, you know what? This year, we're starting. It's, I don't know, 80%, 70%, whatever you think it is, is built. And these are the things we have our arms around that fall into these buckets. That allows us to communicate to people and say, this is why we're doing this. And then if we have to pivot mid-year, we can say, okay, we were putting money here for this literacy. We need even ties to the FTEs tonight that we discussed at our board meeting. Those are real numbers. That translates to people. So that's what I want to implement into here somehow, some way.
Okay. I love the score. I love the, what's it called? Dashboard scoreboard? Okay, I love the scorecard. But isn't the scorecard more evidence rather than a goal or a measure? I mean, that's just.
That's the disconnect we're having though, right?
But you don't, so I am thinking that that's just, that's part of the evidence that she's achieving these goals. But it's not going, I'm not going to say percentage numbers or anything like that in a goal. That's just evidence that it's being worked on and these are the scores that is coming. And then we get to decide what we want.
Well, it's evidence.
This is evidence. I mean, that's one piece of evidence or one. Did you, were you going to say something? No? Am I off track on that?
No, it's, so again, I haven't been a very good teacher, apparently. Because the system that I've shown you multiple times with the district cycle of continuous improvement starts with, right, the very top of that is the strategic plan, the board working document, the scorecard, which then aligns to everything that we're doing. So I think that, I think that's, I mean, that's the magic of it, right? That's the magic is that eventually it all, you can see in the school improvement plans, there's going to be scores around the literacy things that, you know, that Aviva was talking about. So I think what's just really hard right now is to say, so then all of the work, like I said, there's 120 indicators right now, which is ridiculous and there can't be. But if the board were to say, okay, one of your goals is to increase the percentage, or let me get a student one, I don't know. Increase the percent of students in grades six to eight making aggressive growth on brass bridge reading assessments from 11% to 15%. I think, I think that would be unfair to me at this point. To take the whole of what I move and have to set the conditions for as a superintendent and then say my success or not success is based on this piece. So I think that's part of my struggle right now. And maybe that's not what you're saying. Maybe that's just what I'm.
To your point, Terry, because you brought up that rubric or whatever it is you were talking about, the scorecard. I think that's why I like to, and I really believe, leaving it to you understanding what I'm saying about, that helps me to know you're working on a framework where 20%, I mean, I'm up here. If you're doing the framework and you think you're going to be done by a certain time, that gives me some indicator that we're doing it. And then I need to know what's in it.
Yeah, I was just, I was trying to pull, I was trying to pull my evidence.
I don't want to get, I'm not trying to get into details here tonight. But I'm just saying, and because that, even that data will be calculated with the totality of whatever else we're looking at. It's not going to stand alone. It will just be one of those things we just talked about regarding academics. So we kind of know we're moving.
Agreed.
Director Holmes?
Yeah, and so I think not tying your success base right, because that's what we talk about here, that there's important, more important, whatever you said at the beginning. We all understand the complexities or the seriousness of the superintendent, especially coming into a district where you did. Like, I think that's what we recognized as a board, that what we were starting with needed major demolition and, you know, building it from, we keep tucking these analogies, the plane from scratch, whatever. So I think that's there. And we always talk about, well, yeah, of course, that's part of the job, part of the job. But it's at least giving me something that prevents us from going back and forth at the table to you saying, here's my evidence. And me saying, that's not what I was looking for. Like, that's not valuable to me. Like, because then we could do that all day long. So of course, I'm cognizant and aware of all of the other things you're doing. Because you would still, I would think, knowing how you presented and what you bring for detail, you would still do that. It's just, it's a measurement tool. I mean, if we don't go from, I don't, whatever we're measuring from 61% to 73% in one year, I'm not going to say, oh, you failed. But it'll say, okay, how else are we going to focus? If that was the goal we set, where do you think you weren't getting the support you needed? Or what didn't we do? Or what's your suggestion? Do we need to pivot resource, financial resources to hiring more ELL teachers or whatever it is? It's just, it's a roadmap to a conversation about a board that's serious about changing where we are academically, financially, and culturally. So that's what I'm utilizing it for. Not a gotcha, you screwed all of this up by yourself. Because lord knows, that's not it. We've got everybody that's supporting it. But at least it tells us when we're making these decisions. Because we're making substantial decisions. When we invest, you know, whatever money in EduClima or training the teachers and all of this stuff, it just allows us to evaluate it. And I really need those numbers. Because then it'll tell us, nope, we shouldn't have allocated it that way. That's what I'm looking for. I don't know how to say that any other way. I hope that makes sense.
So it's part of, so again, if you go back and I can resend the district system of continuous improvement.
Remember it.
Yeah, so that's, so the scorecard, which will be, we will kick something off with this fall as we do the CACR, the world's best workforce report. There'll be the indicators, there'll be some indicators, right? A starting point indicator for this. So that's in goal number four. It's part of that system.
So can we do that? That is a hard date for me. We'll kick it off by November 30th. I mean, that's kind of where I'm going. Like, I want some dates or some measurements of some sort. And that is like, okay, boom, yeah, we didn't have it. We're working on it and now we're kicking it off. And it's a starting point for me. So that's.
Aviva's next. Aviva's been waiting patiently. She had me put her on the list year after her.
I see the save impatient. I just wanted to say that it's five to midnight. We had committed to ending meetings at 10:00. It's very late and I know that we're probably all getting tired. So I just wanted to get us refocused back onto, like, I, no, no, no. But like, to getting us moved towards getting.
Decisions?
Decisions, yeah. No, I thought it was great discussion. I'm not, but I'm just saying that it is getting very late and.
I agree on that.
So if we could just, I don't know what the next step is, but.
Helen, did you have something to say in the?
Well, yeah, I mean, that exchange was great. Because I think, you know, the part that really kind of struck out for me is, then it tells us if you come back and say you need something, then we can say, well, where can we help? I mean, you know, when we're making budget decisions, I mean, we're, you know, that's the purpose. You know, is to, when we're talking about cutting staff and you're saying, this is my recommendation and all the recommendations you're making, we understand the, we understand the vision. You know, but, and so I too, you know, that's when I talk about monitoring metrics. It's like, what are you giving us so we can kind of know where we're going? That's bottom line for me. I don't need to be any more specific than that. I mean, I, you know, we're always talking about, we have a smart, or we don't know if we say smart, but we have a good, great superintendent. I can, you know, she's smart. So I don't have to go, you know, leave it to you to, you know, kind of start through it and figure it out. And I'm agreeing with Aviva. It's getting late.
It is getting late. I mean, the goals are still what we want, we said all of us want to focus on. I mean, we named those things. This scorecard is just some evidence that we'll be getting when we're doing the evaluation of things that you worked on and the achievements that are happening. But what we wanted were these particular, I mean, we want work on what's happening with a vision for our district. And we want to have our SOD finances taken care of. We want the community engagement and we want.
Those are already goals. Your priorities are very similar as individuals. You did talk about finances. You talked about community engagement. And you talked about academics. In these four goals, I think those are in here.
Yeah. So.
Director Long, what do you think we're missing?
No.
You don't see academics or community or finance in here?
No.
What would you like to see instead?
Well, I'm back at, like, you know, because you said, what is an action plan? And then we went off on another problem. I would like to see an action plan where we're listing, where we get to know what's the problem? And then what are the possible solutions? And what are the possible steps to those solutions? And then targeted points when the check-in on that progress will be given to the board. So I wrote this down when you had asked that question and then waited for the roundabout two for my turn. But like I said, I need more measurable stuff. Otherwise, I'm going to just be like, no, no. This isn't, you know, and I don't want a goal about something that I have no knowledge of.
If I could speak, that is the tricky spot that you're in. Because of how much work is needed in this district and how heavy a lift it is. And in the second year, it's a tremendously heavy lift. I said this is ambitious. I would never say overly ambitious because Dr. Stallow is a high achiever. I work with an awful lot of boards on these and an awful lot of superintendents. And this is actually quite specific from a performance evaluation perspective. The foundation of the goal being, or a goal area driven by the board, because each of these does talk about the board when it comes to the goal. And then the evidence. The problem, I think, in the dichotomy we have is that the plan of action isn't defined yet. Because she's creating the plan of action as she's building this and as she's developing the academic and as she's working with her new leadership team. It's all happening. So it's almost as if it's going to make sense in hindsight. You can't forecast what it is because we don't know yet. The dashboard will be a part of it, of course, but it's so much bigger than that. That's where I'm struggling too.
But the plan that I have to implement as that first goal is based on the direction that the board's going to give me in the next three months.
Right.
So it's the board direction that I have to implement.
Are we okay with goal one? And I know, I know you're not going to have 100%. I know this.
Majority of us are okay with goal one.
No, I'm not okay with goal one.
Director Holmes?
Can we take out the vision team? I mean.
You just want to say successfully implement the school board direction recommendations? Or redoing the district, I mean, what do you want?
School board recommendations for reimagining 281. Because it's going to come in a different way. I'm not putting all, I can't, I'm not putting all my weight on.
It's not saying that it does, Kim. It's saying, I rewrote this specifically. It says, my goal is to successfully implement the board direction per recommendations of the vision team and additional board study and stakeholder input. So all, or feedback. So all of those things are a part of it.
Yeah, and patience, please. I didn't have another printed out copy, so I have this one and I've been working on my phone. So if I misread something.
I changed it based on the feedback from y'all.
I know, and I just had it up. I had it up and I read it. I'm, I was just, I don't know what to do because everybody's getting punchy. There's.
Director Uto?
I know, but we've put it off for so long. So at some point, we need to launch on it.
Goal one looks great to me.
Looks great to me. Looks great to this one. Not you. Renee already said it looked good to her, but she's not here right now. She went home sick.
I'm okay with goal one. I really do believe that, I think the, I really think that the feedback that the superintendent's gotten already. Now, from the feedback that you've gotten from the board tonight, Superintendent, do you feel like that might, if you sit with that document, that might influence you to maybe manipulate it a bit more? Or what, what? Anything?
Not unless I have full direction to do so. Because I feel like I took, I took into account, I reworked that first goal based on the feedback from last time. I added a number around the student engagement to help with the objectivity. And I added back the piece around implementing the district system of continuous improvement, which will include a scorecard to help us monitor moving forward. A whole range, academics, a whole range of data.
I'm not necessarily fixed on the goals, as they said. I'm more thinking about the evidence. And so I really do believe that some of the conversations happening around this table with regard to what kind of evidence people want to see or what might be more helpful would be a helpful thing to do. I mean, and I say that with good reason. Because if we are indeed a team and I'm getting feedback that people are saying, there's different kind of evidence that might be, that I might want to have. Because the last couple of times around, our superintendents just went off and created, you know, came up with evidence that they thought we wanted to see and just gave us a bunch of paper. Now, I'm being a little bit trite, but not much.
How about we move on to goal two about finance? Did you have something? Director Uto, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to echo what Dr. Bassett was saying. She says she's agreeing with the goals, but the evidence is the issue. And I think we all agree that at midterms, we will have the opportunity to look at what is presented and adjust this document as needed. So if the goal is not the issue, let's just go through it and prove it as is. And we all said it's flexible. So at midterms, we will look at it again, please.
Okay, so, no, I do. Because when we talked about this last time, I said I didn't want any reimagined stuff in there at all. So, and it's still there, so. I think, no, like, stop. Because I stopped because I'm in mid-sentence and then somebody's trying to rebut what I'm trying to say. I feel like I should have a chance to say what I want to say.
Go ahead.
So I had said that last time when we met and talked about this, So I had said that last time when we met and talked about this, that that re, that I didn't agree with having reimagine in there. We don't really have enough information or detail about that reimagine, what's going on there? There, there is no, there was no resolution written around what it was that we wanted as a board for this reimagine thing to take place or shape into or morph into or whatever it was supposed to be. I mean, that wasn't board-directed at all. I, I don't, I don't get that at all. And then, you know, now we're hearing about this scorecard, which we have been hearing about, a scorecard, a scorecard, a scorecard. Why not let us see into what this scorecard is? So now we're saying possibly in the fall, we're going to see it sometime? I don't know. But I, I have been hearing that that was something we were going to see all along. And now maybe it's going to be the fall. I mean, I hope it is. I also have reservations about, you know, you want to say this is a fluid document and we can make adjustments. And Director Uto is bringing up, well, when we get to midterm, then we'll make it. No, because then you guys are going to change the rules on us again and not allow any kind of adjustment to be happen. I'm, I'm just like, it just seems like a reoccurring theme here. And so I don't want that reoccurring theme. I want to be able to be on the same page, but it's hard to be on the same page when people keep putting barriers and blockers in my way and then wanting to dispute what I have to say as a board member. That's not right. It's not fair. Stop coming up with arguments to argue against me. Please listen to kind of what I'm trying to say. There is value in it.
Thank you.
I wasn't trying to dispute you, I just.
Director Helen, right?
All I was going to say is that similarly to number one, goal two says to implement an SOD plan that we don't have. And yet nobody seems to have an issue with that. So I'm just saying that we have to, like you were saying, build the plan as, as we're going. And we're talking about plans that will be created and then board-approved and then implemented. So I think that they're analogous. For, for whatever reason, some board members have an issue with the reimagine committee that is going, has been looking through this information, will be making some recommendations. But they're just a committee that's making recommendations. Fact that they exist, the fact that they're mentioned doesn't preclude the fact that the board will be the one approving whatever plan. And so I'm not, I, I, I don't, I, I know you guys have your feelings about it. I'm not saying they're wrong. I'm just saying that, that doesn't preclude any decisions that we make. So I don't, I think that, that we should take that piece out of it and just know that similar to goal two with the SOD plan, it's the same as the reimagine plan. They're plans that we're going to have to, that will be made, that we'll have to approve and then they'll be implemented. That's all.
And you are moving very, very quickly. This district is moving at warp speed with the changes you're making, which is also part of the problem, I think. Director Holmes?
I, it, it's not in my feelings about the, the vision team at all. I appreciate the work they've done. It is just one committee. And so that's why I don't want it in the, the goal, because there are a zillion other components that we already have information on that go into it. And so how this board tends to operate is if there's a recommendation put forward by administration, that's what we use as the guidepost. So that's why I'm trying to remove that. Not because I have an issue specifically with anybody on that team, but it speaks to, we didn't do a resolution. We didn't know what the outcomes of it were going to be. Things have changed as we went along because of all of the things that have been uncovered financially with this. As a school board, we are required by statute. So putting that in under a superintendent goal gives that group more power than they have. You advised us when we were searching for a superintendent not to get too much community input because ultimately it is the board who's making the decision. So we didn't do more community engagement. So now I'm being told, well, use this community engagement in a goal. That's mixed messages for me. So I understand we're going to reimagine and we've got to move forward, but that's why I'm having problems with this goal. Leave it in if you want. SOD, yes, that's going to go in by January 31st. But what I would like is a work session to sit down and talk about, have you all looked at that document? We've got some, there are major things in there that we're going to have to get through. When are we going to try to get out of SOD by year-to-date versus budget, all of these things? So to me, those are specific components in here. That moves it forward because we have no, no option. We just have to approve SOD. But when we ask the CFO what that actually means, it's like, well, you give them your plan and it always, it's another fluid document because sometimes we're not going the way we want to or we thought it would go with the plan. So there's got to be some set things here because we didn't get to this place out of nowhere. Their declining enrollment happened a long time ago, you know, the writing's been on the wall. So that, these measurements are part of it. So SOD, can we tie capture rate increase or enrollment increase to that? Those are evidence-based things. And again, it's not on just one person. It's the person who's leading the district and it allows us to measure if we're going in the right direction. I just feel like it doesn't matter what I say right now. So we're just going to, if we're going to majority the board, I would just rather know.
Some of the things I think you're looking for will be outcomes from the way this is written. It's just that we can't know it yet.
Well, it's, and I, sorry.
No, it's not out, that's not what I meant though. That's not.
But in nine months to measure, in nine months at a year that we're closing schools and consolidating schools, I don't believe there's one ounce of fairness to having me improving capture rates in that year.
I, no, I understand.
I'm sorry, that's just the example you gave, so that's why I wanted to speak to it.
I'll clarify then, because when we had Hazel Reinhardt come, you were excited. You said, oh, if it's at 62%, then that's growth, that's area. And I thought we were on the same page. That's right, because we can get some number there. And so now it's just like, well, now that we're going to close schools, that's not a target anymore. I'm trying to figure out, we went in SOD because we stopped capturing students. That's a primary reason of why we're here. So I don't think it's unreasonable to say, what are we doing to get that, the enrollment back? Because students are funding, like, I, I, it's not an all or nothing and I.
Do you feel that would tie Director Holmes into the goal around improving culture, climate and trust with staff and families? Enrollment should go up if that is improved, correct? And if academics are improved with the continuous improvement, enrollment should go up.
And I think of part of the scorecard, I think that measure on a scorecard, I agree a hundred percent on.
I'm sorry, I don't know enough to look at you, Director Long, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was on the list, then Helen, then Aviva. So, yeah, I mean, I feel like, sorry to go back to goal number one, but stakeholder feedback parentheses reimagine the vision team in there. If that needs to be included in there, because that's a part of stakeholder feedback. That's how I feel. That, that would be in parentheses to that, not a standalone by itself like that. And the SOD, we didn't get to it, but I don't necessarily agree with that. And, because I feel like that's going to be done, what, in a couple of months? That has to, it has to be.
But then it has to be implemented.
I don't want a wordsmith to two in the morning. If it would help, could we say something around goal one? Successfully implement school board direction per recommendations of board study and stakeholder feedback, including the reimagine committee? Or something like that? Is it because it's first that we're caught up on it versus the board study and stakeholder feedback? To your point, Director Long, including reimagine Ardell Vision 2030 team? I mean, if you move it to the bottom of that sentence, does that help? And it puts board study and stakeholder feedback first? I mean, is the order of it, one of the things you're tripping on?
No, it's not the order of it and I'm not in my feelings about it. It's just one piece of the stakeholder feedback. And there's lots of pieces to the stakeholder feedback. Are we going to list them all? No, we're not. That would be a really lengthy goal then if we listed all the stakeholder feedback that we have. We're not. So I just feel like that's not, that, that shouldn't be there. And I've said that before, it shouldn't be there. And I don't appreciate people saying I'm in my feelings about that. But it's just a portion of, and that portion isn't no more important than any of the other stakeholder feedback that we might be getting. That might be presented to us.
So who would like to remove the reimagine Ardell Vision 2030 team verbiage? Director Long, Director Holmes?
I like what you said, bit more inclusive.
Well, I'll tell you what, this is four pages and from my experience, it's too long for a superintendent evaluation document. Because you do need to stay out of the weeds. I think progress is more important than perfection. Are you making progress? Are you headed in the right direction? It is not perfect. It's never going to be perfect. With this board, you're never going to come to agreement this year on it. It's frustrating for you, it's frustrating for Dr. Stallow. I think people are energized with some of the things that are occurring here, per board direction, per Dr. Stallow and her team's work. It's exciting and it's too bad that we are getting bogged down on something that is a guiding document for her performance evaluation and yet there's so much more to it and you all know it and we can't fit it in here.
Then too, Barb, we don't need that either, like. Kind of eating it, making judgments versus us just working through this.
I apologize if that's what you're sensing. I don't know if you can work through it. I really don't.
Well, I, I think we can, because I, I think that, I think we can work through it because I think that there's been enough said here and enough feedback, quite frankly. I think that what I'm hearing, what's coming through for me and what I believe and what's coming through for me, I understand that there's this concern about the standalone quality of what it looks like or what you, what it says on that paper about the vision. I think it's more inclusive than that, quite frankly, so I don't see it that way anyway. You know, and I think sometimes for some people, having it worded in, in an inclusive way helps. Because there are some people, the letter of the law, if it, if it doesn't say it, we don't, you know, then we don't have to factor it. I'm not in that camp. I believe it is more inclusive. So I really like that phrase that Barb said and if that's something she and Thierry can talk about, fine. I'm more interested in the evidence. I'm more interested in seeing evidence. I'm more interested in giving, in, and understanding what the indicators are. Even a separate sheet that talks about, here are the indicators that, of whatever. Because it's the indicators that are going to tell us we're going in a particular direction. And that's not what I see in that document. I don't see really, I mean, the indicators are vague. I need a metrics with the indicators, is what I'm saying. And I think you're, you're already working on it. We work on a score, score sheet, you know, and then how do we, how do we factor that? How do we use it? What, you know, then what evidence in that and how, how often will we talk about it? I mean, I think those are concrete things. We spend all together too much time on this board, as far as I'm concerned. Talking about things that don't really go with their, there's a business of it. But when we get ready to talk about some of the things that are more, the fun stuff, because it's the fun stuff for me. The academic achievement and we're making progress and what are we going to do? We're going to have a scorecard, you know, what's the profile, you know? All those things is the excitement of being a school board member because all we do is talk about policy, you know? But, but I need indicators. I need to know we're going in a, a particular direction and I don't like surprises.
Where would you like to go from here? Thank you, Dr. Bassett.
We accept goal one.
With how Barb rewrote it?
I can do it with you rewriting it. I can live with the, with the reimagine there. Whether people like reimagine or they don't like it, it's a fact that it's been working in our, people have been working on it in our district. So it's part of what's happening in our district.
I can respect what the two directors are saying about reimagine, but I also believe, just like they do, that it's more inclusive than just that.
Totally.
I believe that. And I think that should be in that document because I think it helps people who get lost. And they're, the letter of the law people, it helps them. You know, and, and I think it helps us too. And I'm, I'm, you know, I mean, I think we all want to be successful. You know, we want the superintendent to be successful. And so why have ambiguous language if we can figure out some things that help us get us there, let's do it. I mean, I, I'm ready to go, because I'm getting a little cranky.
So goal two, people can accept Barb's wording? Can you accept it?
Oh, one.
Oh, one. I think at the end of the day, y'all do what you want. I don't have a ton of confidence that I, I will, I know what my work is this year. I clearly know my work and I have no idea how anyone would measure up to the expectations of this current board. So I'm going to do work. You wordsmith it, you do what you need to do, but I'm going to do the work.
I'm fine with goal one, the way it's stated.
I like the way, I liked your edit. And if she's okay with it, then I'd like the edit that you put on it because I think it is more comprehensive. And, and she said, yeah, I mean, she said she's okay with it.
Yeah, we have three more goals to do.
I didn't write it, so I mean, I'll, we'll wordsmith it tomorrow, just a sentence or two.
Yeah, otherwise we're not, we have to be, goal number two.
We also, I just want to say one thing. We, we can wordsmith these until three in the morning. I think we came in tonight with a board majority being okay with the way they were.
I agree.
Well, could, we could stop right now and just take the temperature and just see.
Goal, goal number.
But that wasn't why we scheduled this time right now to do that. If that was the case, then why didn't we do that the other time? And then, you know, then to speak of professionalism, then for somebody to sit there and spew something out into the room and now everybody's like, oh, no, no, now we got to do it this way, we got to do it this way. I don't really like that. That, that seems to be like, you know, we just keep following along and not working together as a board. We were starting to have a conversation as a board. And then that stops, then that stops because something is interjected. So we can't continue on to have this dialogue. And then the things that are interjected aren't professional statements.
So that was a call on me because I said that, at the beginning of this meeting, people, four board members said they were okay with these goals.
True.
But I adjusted.
The stuff that you said before that. No, I want to clarify.
I, I don't believe that, I don't believe I could have provided, I know what my last evaluation looked like. And I don't believe that there is anything that I could provide here that will meet the standards of all seven individuals. I, I don't believe that. And that's just based on the experience that I had in the last year. I hope I'm wrong?
Okay. These are all things that I want you to be working on this year and this is the work of the district that is encapsulated in this. So I support this, as I said in the beginning of the meeting.
I already said what I had to say about goal one. And the rest of the goals, I don't have an issue with. And, but what my issue is, because I don't think we should just, is the evidence. And I think that's what I've been talking about from whether it's metrics, edrics, monitoring, I don't know where you want to slice it. But when I understood that we had this, this scorecard come along, then having some sense that we're going to be seeing it, all those kinds of things, I can, that resonates with me, you know, because that's my, that's what I care about. I don't care about a lot of narratives. I want data.
Thank you, Director Holmes.
I don't feel I have unreasonable expectations. I'm looking for measurements. And the frustration for me is I've asked a bunch of different times to give a standalone meeting for this or to talk about it. I understand it's late. I understand we all lose our functionality. But the reality is, this is huge and this is a document that we use to evaluate the leader of the district, including an incentive pay to the tune of 10%, up to 10%. So it matters. And to pretend like it doesn't isn't okay with me. And so I don't know where it fell through on, on agenda planning, on if we needed to do it earlier or maybe that's, you know, something that we need to learn from or a standalone night. But I, I, it is, because I don't think it's a fair assessment to look at me and say, I can't meet expectations when I was quite clear before and now on what I'm looking to do. So if we're going to sit here and talk about that and then the last meeting we had ended with, I don't have time for this. So that is very jarring as a school board member. It does shut down conversation. The ones asking the questions aren't the one, we didn't, we didn't schedule this late at the, the meeting and, and decide to be here this late. But we are trying to have our voices heard. And that's the expectation. And we have a district where, yeah, you've got 62% of the people. And so if you want to keep rolling with that, have at it. But I thought the goal was to get better and improve how, who we're servicing and how. Because you can look at it all day long. Enrollment's been declining for a long time, so that has to be a factor here. Because we're not measuring anything effectively. And I have a right to have my voice heard on this and how I'm going to do evaluations, because we all know how it went before. And the promise was we would come together and try to listen to each other. It's not happening. So let's pack up then if that's what we're all doing. But the answer is that's the document they're going to move forward with.
So I, you know, I, I see Kenneth's hand, but I'm going to, but my hand was up first for Kenneth and I see his hand too. And I guess my feeling is this, the process this year did not include an opportunity to meet earlier for the board to talk about its own goals and to have some collaboration. That did not happen. And that's the board's responsibility. It's not the superintendent's responsibility.
So would you suggest a meeting next July, in early July, to talk about that third year?
I'm talking about what I'm talking about right now. And so next year, fine. But I'm saying that was a missed opportunity and it was concerning based on how things went with the previous evaluation with the previous superintendent. But this board proved that it took us a while to get there. We were able to go through the evaluation with our previous superintendent and get it done. This board. This board didn't have that opportunity. And that's been a part of the process as long as I've been serving, you know? But we missed that. And so I didn't make it an issue. But it turns out I wasn't the only one who expected to have it. The collaborative process is one that we have had before. That didn't necessarily happen. So, but I'm not looking for a place not to agree. If I do disagree, I'm going to say it, you know? But, you know, I saw something I thought was missing and I talked about it. I think that every director has the absolute right to talk about the things that, that are concerning to them. I think we all need to take a look at where, where we need to improve things. And maybe meeting earlier next year might, maybe that, some good can come out of this is that we realize that the board needs to meet. Not then we meet with the superintendent, but the board needs to have time to, in space, to meet on its own, to talk about what's important to us and what do we see? That's historically the only thing I've ever known. And when that doesn't happen, people have to figure out a way to fit it in, you know? And it's not a conversation that's necessarily led along by the superintendent. The collaboration is that the superintendent comes in or what the superintendent thinks is important. And because you respect the superintendent, he listens.
Thank you. Director Wuto?
Yeah, I want to move the motion that we've had a lot of deliberation on these goals here that we go through each goal by goal. If it is not the will of the board to have a goal in there, we strike it out. If it is the will of the board, we keep it in so we can move on.
Okay, I'll second it.
Well, you've already stated you have the will as, as is, so let's not go through the motions.
So you'd rather just do it as a document as a whole?
What do you mean?
We can adjourn. All four goals at once?
I didn't understand.
Okay. They want to go through goal motion and a second, they go goal by goal. All right. All in favor of going goal by goal, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Goal one. Thumbs, thumbs up or thumbs down?
The way it's written right now?
Up, up, down.
The way it's written right now.
I thought you were going to...
Yeah, we're taking it the way it is right now. Well, you said you were...
Yeah, we are going, I don't know. We're just like, this is just taking the temperature.
I got a text from Director Bowman, but that can't count because she's not here, right? No, I cannot count. Okay, one, one, two, three, one, two. Are you abstaining?
I want, I like the, what Barb said.
Putting the reimagine Vision 2030 at the end of that sentence instead of the beginning?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's more inclusive than just the reimagine group.
I can live with that. You said stakeholder and board study. Those were...
Additional board study and stakeholder feedback, including the reimagine Vision 2030 committee.
Yeah, and, and boards, whatever.
Fine. Re, reworded, goal one, everything else stays the same. Use your thumb up. No? Her words.
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, because I believe it's inclusive, like it's been said. I believe that. That's why I was saying what you're saying.
I see the thumb. One, two, three, four. Okay, goal two.
SOD.
Goal two. SOD.
Oh, we got to do that.
Okay. One, two, three, four. Goal three.
That's the new one from the last time we met.
Provide leadership to implement the district system of continuous improvement.
I have one more thing.
Four ups. You're approving the evidence the way it is, though, too.
Well, that's what I was just going to say. So...
This is where your evidence comes in.
Well, is that, but, 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 but that's not in there now. But is that, are you, is that in the evidence?
I just, I just wrote the scorecard in it.
So that's included in the evidence?
Yep. Scorecard will be in there. The word scorecard will be in the evidence?
With scorecard for some evidence. Director Wuto, can I see a thumb? Oh, thank you. Good. Goal four. Goal four.
He has to go to breakfast soon.
Yes. Invest in improvement, improving culture, climate, and trust with staff, families, and community members. I can't argue with that. One, two, three, four. All right. We have a set of goals.
With the evidence, I had a board member last year say something that might make sense to you. And I don't know. He said, I don't know what I'm looking for, but I'll know it when I see it.
I think the superintendent's...
And that, that kind of points to the unfolding of the document and the action plan. You don't know what the action plan is because you haven't seen it yet. And you are new to working together. It's only been a year and two months. So you are in that, was it early evolved, early performing storming norming? You're in that early stage of learning to work together. And it's going to start to make a lot more sense, I think, the more you work together and the more trust might be built amongst board members and superintendent. But I think that action plan, the evidence, it's, it's going to at some point click and you'll be out, that's what I was looking for, like some of you tonight with the scorecard. I think if you have faith in the direction you're going...
I'm just telling you, if it's not in the document explicitly, it doesn't matter.
That's because...
That's how we operate.
That's how we haven't gelled together as a board, which is even less time than superintendent spent with us.
It's not how this has happened.
I mean, I mean, that's a challenge. Just, you know?
I'd like to say thank you, Barb, for being here, for...
Sorry, couldn't be more effective. Build consensus that everyone felt good about.
One, two, three, four. We still have enough. Okay. Anybody else have anything else?
No, but I do have a question. So in terms of...
Are we adjourning or no? Which is a question, then we're adjourning.
I do have a mid, a question. So at the midterm, back to this comment about fluid. I, I don't know about fluid, but I think the culture has been at the midterm. We're not trying to do anything dramatic and it's not, you know? But I do think that maybe that's a time when we can, you know, check in and see where we are. And, and the reason I think that becomes important is because we still have a new board. We've got two new directors who came on in January. And then we, you know, I mean, it, it just is what it is. And it, 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 just like we have the superintendency that's turned over, turned over, so is the board. And then we've had a difficult last couple of years. So I think if this is a place that can help this board and this organization, this district move forward, pausing then to have a deeper conversation, I think would be helpful. I'm not suggesting what happens during that time. Maybe we can talk about that and get your input, superintendent, as we move toward that. And have the chair and vice chair talk about it. Maybe have a work session in the future where we talk about it. I think more time to talk about things that are important before we get to them matters. Having important conversations where we have data for just a couple of days and several, a couple of people still have jobs, their work, you know? So if you get something on Thursday or Friday and you have to talk about it on Monday, I don't think that's a formula for success.
Do you ever go offsite for your retreats or your work sessions? Yeah, like the Bahamas?
We're pretty much off topic right now. Let's adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Kenneth.
Thank you. You'll have a good morning.
Stay safe. Stay safe.
Are you at all ever interested in some PD with Gail Gilman?